So we will call to order the Aspen School District.
What do they have, Eliza?
Eliza's in her office.
Oh, okay.
We can text her.
I'm here.
Okay, great. She's here.
Yeah. Eliza, can you call the role?
Certainly. Katie Fresh.
In person and present.
Susan Merle. Here. Can you hear me? Yes. Jonathan Nickel. Dwayne Romero.
Here.
And Suzie Zimmet.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So adoption of the agenda, it's been changed in the last couple of days. So has everybody seen the latest agenda today? Okay. Okay. All right. So can we move to approve the agenda? Anybody want to?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Just a couple of rolls.
I'm going to call roll for Katie Fresh.
Aye.
Susan Merle.
Aye.
Jonathan Nickel.
Aye.
Dwayne Romero.
Aye.
And Suzie Zimmet.
Aye.
They're moved. Thank you.
Next, item 4.1, AEA update, 15 minutes. And I have my, who do we have to speak from AEA?
Hey Suzie, this is Kay. And I have a little presentation for you. So bear with me for a little bit.
Uh. It's a little challenge.
Is she up on that screen?
If not, I can.
Just turn one to. Yeah, just turn one. Yeah, turn one.
Yeah, turn that, yeah. Turn that one, they can have that one, we can have that one.
Perfect.
There you go.
We'll get the technology down eventually. Perfect. Yes, thank you.
Just let me know when you're ready.
We're ready.
All right. Do you have me shared?
We all see you.
Because the one thing with Zoom is when you were the presenter, you actually, you only get to see what's on your screen and you don't get to see all the other goodness going on out there. So here we go. Aspen Education Association's presentation. So right now, as of Friday, we sent out a survey to staff. We had 92% of our members respond. 129 out of 140 members. 75% believe that we should begin the school year online. Less than 10% were in support of the pre-K through six in-person plan. And AEA was able to slip these responses with only four days from Friday until this afternoon. So we as educators, and not just the teachers, but the whole staff, are driven to give our input. Some of our concerns that we have are the lack of social distancing with the full classes, the consistent mask wearing, the shared bathroom space with possible 100 students in the same bathroom, requiring remote staff to work on campus, mental health concerns for both students and staff, the safety of our outdoor classrooms, the safety response protocols, because outdoor ed is very different than an outdoor classroom. And so we want to make sure that the public understands the difference to those. So part of our concerns where if you're, if we're going pre-K through four, that is a possible of 550 students in one building, along with our birth students up in the cottage, don't want to forget about those lovely ones. And our fifth and sixth grade, if we add that, you're adding an additional 230 students to campus. And so we would have 320 pre-K through 12th grade staff along with all those students. That is 1,100 possible humans on campus on a daily basis. We also know that with the future bond coming up, it's to fix part of the HVAC system. We'd like to know if the HVAC systems will all be running correctly by August 19. Communication. AEA has met two times formally representing data around the back to school plan, roughly around four hours and 15 minutes this morning with David Baugh. Thank you so much. We also had a wonderful conversation with Susan Merle on the school board this morning. The task force has met only two times for a grand total of three hours with very little instructions. And they were only told to address the topic that they were assigned to. There are no dates for future task force. And it is, now there's talk of possibly a new task force. When asked the frequency of that task force should meet, our superintendent said at least once a week. And just so you know, AEA feels that this is a very, a very emotional and a lot of decision making. And we feel that once a week just isn't going to do this. This might even have to be daily. We're running out of time. We cannot begin having full staff and students on campus with less than two and a half weeks. So every day there's new information. We need to include staff and community when making these decisions to make sure that all needs are met. We know that face-to-face learning before the pandemic was vast. But we need time to develop the proper infrastructure to support everyone and that we should not be rushing into it. We have two quotes from a couple of different parents. Whoops, let me back up here. "I know that, I know what's personally best for me and my family is to have my student at school for fourth grade, but I'm not convinced that's what's best for the entire community. It was apparent that many of the teachers and staff are nervous and even afraid of being at school in person under the current circumstances. I do not want to force them to go to school so that my life is made easier. That cannot be the right thing to do." Another letter that's going around that very, a lot of parents have solved or signed, had this paragraph in it. "Involvement, input, and buy-in from teachers may be the most critical component of making this plan work. While we won't speculate on their specific needs in this letter, there has been some feelings that teachers haven't been significantly involved in back-to-school discussions so far. That feeling needs to be reversed immediately as teachers likely have the most questions and are most aware of the details that need to be addressed for them to have confidence in the back-to-school plan. In summary, teachers need to be treated like the essential workers that they are and given the tools that they need to succeed." Here we have a member or a note from a staff member.
Hi, my name is Clay Shiflett. I'm a school teacher for the Aspen School District. Been teaching for 20 years and 45 years old. The first week of March, I was infected with COVID-19 and have been struggling for the last five months to figure out how to get back to being normal. I've had every symptom on the list, from loss of smell to fever to aches, pain, chest pain, heart palpitations, breathlessness, sleeplessness, dizzy spells. You name it, and I've experienced it. And I guess I'm what they call a long hauler, having these symptoms come back ever since the first week of March to this day. I'm worried about the prospect of going back to school as a school teacher and facing crowds or at least having hundreds of people in one place and what that means about sharing airspace. Certainly, I'm worried about the community as a whole. I was 45 years old and didn't seemingly have any reason to be worried, no diagnosed pre-existing conditions whatsoever. I was at the top of my performance skiing and uphill skiing and this thing whipped me. And so I'm very concerned, not only for myself and whether or not antibodies are going to last. Doctors don't have any clear answer about. And for sure, I'm worried about the larger population as a whole. I just don't believe we can say with certainty what it means for our population to gather in schools, children being vectors.
They're out in the front. Should we go see them?
I'm terrified. I was asked.
How did I even know how to open the trunk?
I don't know. Do you want me to open this?
Healthy. This thing can do damage and have longstanding effects that doctors don't have answers for and that they can't put a finger on why I have symptoms that feel like heart attack and why I wake up gasping for air at night and can't sleep lying down flat. I'm hopeful at this point that I will recover 100%. You know, I have periods of time where I believe that has happened and then I'm hit again with another wave of some type of symptom. I hope everybody and their health is considered. The safety of the community, I hope that is the number one issue on the table with regard to opening schools and bringing back large crowds. I am hopeful that the safety and health of the community is the number one priority. I think the easy decision is the safe decision. I don't believe there is a rush to go back. I think it's worth patience towards a vaccine and having more ability to with certainty say, you're not at risk.
Kay, are you going to continue?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, it kind of went. So, oh, we got Kamala. I'm seeing if it's going here. There we go.
Hi, I'm Kamala and I teach Spanish in our district. And I'm here to tell you my experience with COVID. Before COVID, I was very strong, athletic, doing all the activities we do here in our valley. And then I got COVID in the middle of March. And I was very, very sick for a month and a half. During that month and a half, a month of that, I was on oxygen because I couldn't breathe. I didn't feel like I was getting the oxygen. And I had all the typical symptoms that you've all heard about that everybody has, you know, with COVID. For me, the extreme symptoms were exhaustion and the cough, the body aches and tight lungs, not feeling like I could breathe or get the oxygen. Now, today, I still am dealing with some of those symptoms. I felt like I got completely better. And then, and then I, then I get a cough for three or four days. And then I feel like I'm better again and then I have no energy. And, and so it's kind of a roller coaster up and down of different symptoms like that. And so I hope that I will be fully healthy in the future. But there's so little we know about COVID that I don't want anybody in our district or our community, our valley, to get COVID. I think it's really, really important that we keep everybody as safe as we possibly can. And so let's not rush into any situations that may cause people to be unsafe. And I just think we need more time. And, and I would love that we not ask people to put their health at risk or their children's health at risk. So please, let's, let's flatten the curve. Let's, let's make some good plans and, and let's stay healthy. Nobody wants this. And everybody's body is different and you don't know how you're going to react. So I am begging you, please, let's be safe and let's keep everybody healthy.
Thank you so much, Kamala. Thank you so much, Clay. Kay, you probably know you have three more minutes, right?
Yep. So my last screen is just the Aspen Education Association calls on the Aspen School District Board of Oplication for online remote instruction until a comprehensive plan is ready to be implemented safely.
And I wanted to say more than just thank you, Kamala and Clay. Those are very poignant vignettes and we take those stories very much to heart. And thank you for sharing. And we wish both of you a total and full and immediate recovery.
Thanks. And thank you so much for the time to present today. We really appreciate it.
Of course, of course. Thank you. So next is superintendent update. And is that going to be Dave or Theron?
Could you just mention to everyone that we, or maybe I'll just mention, we can't, we're not going to be reading the public comment that is the chat that's going on, on the video call because we're, we're not watching it. We're watching our agenda and all the documentation and stuff that we have and we're not, we're not looking at it.
But we're recording it.
We're recording it, so we'll respond later. But if you're trying to get our attention, we're not reading it right now.
We did read all 206 Zoom chats or more or less that Theron collated from the last Zoom meeting last Thursday.
Adrian.
Oh, Adrian, thank you. Thank you, Adrian. And so we are reading them all, but we can't read it while we're doing our work today in the, in the meeting. But we will respond to all of them. Great. So Superintendent Dave is remote.
He's right there.
Oh, there he is.
Yep.
There he is.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Very well.
Awesome. Good stuff. Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Kay and the rest of AEA for, you know, making their points so clearly and eloquently. And I do want to say, you know, I greatly appreciate, you know, sharing the stories and, you know, we certainly wouldn't wish this on anyone. And I want to say, you know, I'm also pleased after our conversation this morning that we are putting together a smaller task force to address these issues that have been emerging. You know, it is a very complicated question about reopening. The question is about, you know, how to do it, how to do it safely and how to make sure that, you know, parents and teachers are feeling safe. You know, so the draft proposal that we've been talking about, and we'll talk more about this later, is largely just to have somewhere to start. So we are pleased to be able to have a start. I am very pleased that, you know, AEA has agreed to join this work. And, you know, I will be reaching out to the principals later today. My day kind of went sideways and so I wasn't able to get nearly as much done as I wanted to today. But I'm hopeful that we will be able to put together a plan, one that is respectful of the time, respectful of the challenges, and we can build it together. So I think, you know, we have a foundation here. We have a, you know, a draft proposal grounded in the science and the recommendations of the Colorado Department of Education, which is greatly influenced by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And so, you know, any recommendations in there are those based on those. And I'm hearing that that's not good enough. And so I'm looking forward to working with the team here in Aspen to craft a good plan, to consider all options and to be thoughtful and intentional about the return to learning, which we know, you know, our kids really, really benefit from their dedicated staff. I got to meet with several teachers earlier today and their passion and their enthusiasm was second to none. And, and I was really grateful for that. And, you know, we found the time to talk and, you know, they made some requests that, you know, make some sense. Okay, let's factor those into our planning. But, you know, putting together a small team that can really address the numerous issues that have come forward, you know, I think would be really the way to go. And so, you know, I definitely want to thank AEA for, you know, agreeing to do that. And, you know, we'll roll up the sleeves and figure out, you know, what's the best way to open? When's the best time to open? What should the numbers look like? These are all good questions. And, and so we will be addressing those. I can tell you that, you know, preparing for opening or return to learning is pretty much consuming our bandwidth in the district office. And, you know, there's a lot, lot to it. So, you know, looking forward to working with these stakeholders around that issue. And we will be meeting more than once a week. You know, no doubt about it. I think daily would be awesome if we can manage that. And I think, you know, if we just start posting, when we get something done, we post it to the website. It's there for everybody. We can share it out, you know, when we hit milestones. So looking forward to putting that together. So that's basically the superintendent's report in that we have been working on reopening, you know, pretty much nonstop. And, you know, we'll continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Should we go to board members' updates? If you want to skip it, that's always fine to skip. I can just mention, we were at a retreat all day last Monday. We worked all day on vision values, touched on strategic plan, didn't quite get to all of our board policies, but that was because we were doing such other hard work, I guess. I'm not sure.
We should also, Suzie, just make sure it's clear to everyone that we were working on our own board mission and vision and values, which are just the five of us and Dave and Theron. And then, you know, the district-wide work on those things, the mission, values, vision would come, you know, later with more participation from all stakeholders. So just to be clear that that was just for board members, that we had sort of a goal for what we're, our work is. And then we'll do a wider, wider work on that district-wide.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. That was important. Anybody else?
No, I think I'd prefer to wait to talk about the opening stuff when we cover that after.
Any minutes?
For me.
I'd like a clarified question then. And it's for Dave and for Theron. In the agenda, we have 60 minutes set aside for the review of the return to learning. And I don't know if it's your intention to take 60 minutes to walk through that, that draft statement that's got some good policy statements in it. But I think we're, we're now of the, I think, the knowledge that there's a great amount of detail and description and contingency plans and safety plans and implementation and milestone, you know, all the meat that one would expect in a comprehensive plan is still kind of a work in progress. So don't take that as criticism. I'm just curious, is it our intention to take 60 minutes to talk about the policies that are captured and the principles that are captured so far in the draft plan? Or would we be better served to perhaps try to weigh in on some ideas that I think we've all developed on how to get from where we are right now to some level of better understanding and consensus support around a comprehensive plan? I'm sorry, that's really long-winded, but I'm curious as what your appetite is. Dave?
Well, since it's just a plan and since everyone can read it, we probably don't need to read through the whole thing. I think, you know, folks definitely want to get a couple of points across to the board and, you know, our, and I think that would be the space where we could do that. I mean, as we envision it growing, the plan, there'll be, you know, the transportation plan, there'll be the cleaning plans and all of that will be public information. Those just haven't been fully built out yet and merged with this plan. I mean, they're coming together and people are working on it. But I think it would probably be better to, you know, hear what you're thinking and that sort of thing.
So, okay, that's good to understand. And I think that when we get to that next section, I don't want it to be just eye wash and height and a bit of superficial. I think we need to spend some time discussing some of the ideas that need to be developed over the weekend, not in the details of the plan, but to try to, a different approach around how you can bring more people together to develop a more comprehensive and consensus-led plan. And I think we have enough feedback across the community, especially our teacher cadre, to understand that what's on the table right now isn't resonating and isn't finding confidence and trust. So I'll put that aside for a second. I'll suggest to the, to the chair that we spend the 15 minutes on the topic, the election bond update, which we have a few minutes and we could just do a quick update. That too is a very important priority for all of us. But let's get that perhaps 50 to 20 minutes, get it out of the way so we can come back as it's described here. I apologize. I just want to get some clarity off of what we heard from AEA and then Dave's comments. It was a little confusing for me.
So my only comment on that is I think we need to not read through the plan that, as it stands now, but give a summary at least of what it is. So we have a starting point for the conversation. But I also.
Right. I would expect Dave and Theron to give an exact summary, high level, a bit what they did before. But you're right, we definitely want to get some ideas on the table that we can kick around and try to get some consensus such that we can deputize some folks to mobilize into a task force that really, really develops a consensus, comprehensive plan that people can buy into.
So can we save our comments about, our feelings about those various aspects until we talk about that and move to the bond first? Save our.
And I can, I can do a quick overview for the bond as well, just to.
I just want to see if Susan and Jonathan have board.
Oh, it's back. Okay. Uh-oh. Can you guys hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Wait, Susan, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm here. I'm talking.
We see you, but we don't.
I'm talking, but you can't hear me.
Oh, boy. What'd you do, Jonathan? You touched it.
I saw you coming towards the screen, Jonathan.
We can't hear, okay.
We're on the.
You're on my speaker right here.
Oh.
I can hear Susan. I can hear Susan.
Yeah, I'm probably yelling for everybody else.
Now we can hear Susan.
Okay. Hello.
It's a lot of phone.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So yes, that sounds good.
Did you have a report or should we move on?
My, my little report will go along with the election and bond update.
Great.
As well.
And Jonathan's busy. Jonathan, can we move on? Can we move past, skip you, Jonathan, for a board report?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Great. Okay. Bond, blame, do you want to, can I turn the bond?
So.
Update up to you.
For those folks watching at home, in the, in the school board agenda, we have some attachments to help illustrate some progress as to where we are right now on three questions. One, a bond issuance to replace a piece of retiring debt that was used to build the middle school. Two, a renewal of our sales tax question into the city of Aspen, which will be in its third cycle, its third five-year cycle. And three, a renewal of a half a million dollar real estate property tax override in Snowmass Village. Just to remind everyone at home, all three of those questions are very, very important. Two of them support our general fund. So they, teacher salaries, they've benefits, they've programs. And then the bond, the bond could potentially be some number in the 70s, 80s, $90 million of total value that we could use for big, important capital improvements, teacher housing, and some other innovative facilities improvement opportunities that we have, that we've developed as a team and as an organization over the last year. So again, there's some attachments that will illustrate that. But to kind of remind everyone where we've been, the last nine months, the school district through a task force has developed concepts, thoughts, priorities, and then scopes of work that could match all of the things that we need. So think, think public safety, think health, think security, think access, think net zero energy savings, and then think innovation. How can we build different spaces to really support the next 25 to 50 years for education here at the Aspen School District? And then the icing on the cake, where I should have started at the top side, was to provide funds for a bit of affordable housing. So all of that work was student-led, teacher-led, administration-led, and parent-led from September all the way to January. from September all the way to January. And then from after COVID, from about, uh, June, April and May and June, we met virtually, got to finalize the details. All of that work now informs the bond question that we need to put to the community. And it also informs the amount of work that we could actually purchase based off the sizing of the bond. And again, there's some details in our package, but I want to make sure I gave that as a prelude to the, to the board, but also to the public. I, I really do want to underscore the following comment. This is wildly important for this district to secure the approval of all three questions. Wildly important for salaries, benefits, then physical improvements, net zero, health, safety, security, and then innovation platforms for the next 25 to 50 years. Wildly important. So to the extent we got to get ourselves as a district and as an organization back in alignment on big issues, including opening, it's important for all of that, including these questions. I hope that makes sense to the board. I hope that makes a ton of sense to the board. Right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely have to find, we got to get this organization back on track, back in consensus view, working together as a true team in order to be successful in those three votes. It's, they're, they're inextricably linked. They are. We have a belief, Kari, we've had Kari and Gilbert as important consultants guiding all of the design and priorities work. They've been with us from the start. They helped us in the district back in 2005. They're really, really powerful, very, very experienced. They'll be with us through the course of these improvements to the extent we get that bond vote secured. That's where we are right now. And I think, by the way, timeline, timeline, here we are, August 3rd. Kari, together with a couple of other polling consultants, we have developed a survey and a fact sheet that's been published and will hit mailboxes tomorrow, August 4th. We hope to have feedback from the survey by August 18th. By August 18th, the pollsters can then interpret the data and tell us where we stand in the community's eye on these three questions. And they'll also give us some feedback as to what our priorities are. For example, what's more important? Do you want a, a new childcare center or do you just want?
Teacher housing to make sure we have sustainability in terms of being able for teachers to support themselves here on a teacher salary and this value.
You've been very consistent.
I just want to know if that's something, how, how much do you have or how close do we have to get to that final decision in terms of it being a dollar value or a range of dollar values prior to the vote?
I think we have to have some intelligence that describes the, the general range of each bucket, number one. It doesn't have to be down to the dollar, number two. And number three, as long as we're very upfront with our community, that this, these priorities will evolve even through the question, through the election, because we are just at a conceptual stage right now.
Yeah. So we will know if, uh, the money we set aside is going to give us 20 housing units or 50, depending on where the land comes from, where it is.
That's right. That's right. If we, if our minds, if our minds right now, we just kind of use percentages for these particular groupings and categories, I think that our bias would be the biggest percentage would be toward the teacher house. And then the other two priorities would be support to that.
And Katie would like to speak?
Yeah, let, let's wait till he fixes the double speaker.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's in that first grouping. And that first grouping includes a net zero, safety.
Sorry. Pull out his speaker. Feedback. That's an example of positive feedback. Unfortunately, that's an example of what positive feedback is from an engineering perspective. I can't tell. I can't tell that my joke was funny.
Okay, and then he'll be working on it.
Yeah, so, um, just a couple, a couple of things on, on the details behind them out, you know. First of all, I believe that the bond council was very clear to us that, you know, we can ask for up to X number of bonds, but what we actually receive the day that they are underwritten could be a little different. So if we say we want 90, we might get 92. Um, so I think we have to be cautious about prescribing exact dollar number to everything because we don't know what we're going to end up with at the end of that process. So there has to be some. Right, right. No, so, so that's one thing. The second thing is, you know, costs of things change as we progress. So what the cost is, we were to actually cost out every single thing today. By the time we actually go through the full process of going to voters and then going to market, which is likely from what our bond guys said to be January, February, things could be very different in terms of, you know, the cost of pencils. So, uh, I think we need to be careful about getting too much detail for, for that reason only. We definitely, I, I'm very supportive of trying to establish kind of what the buckets are. But I think we want to be careful to say, you know, a boiler is going to cost X and, you know, that. So I, I'm totally on, on board with that. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is this is something that I completely agree with both of you guys about how important this is. Um, and we're going to need, you know, community support, assuming that we get community support from our survey and that people think that it's a, a good idea. Um, we're going to need community support and, and a process in making this happen as well.
Yeah, yeah. It's, that's code speak. I believe some of that's code speak for a successful community-led campaign.
Correct.
To get to the yes. And it, and that's, that's, yeah, I think you're right to, to mention that. And yeah, so by the way, on the escalation of pricing, you are correct. We have some savvy consultants and kind of pre-construction experts and have built-in escalating factors within the scope of the improvements as we cast them out over the next five to seven years of time that we would expect to complete those improvements and make those purchases. So there is a built-in.
Right.
So it gives us a conservative view and you're right, kind of keeps us in a good checks and balance. That they're not, we're not feeling too frothy and, and over assuming some money. If I got correct.
I just want to say that, um, we are very sensitive that this has been a topsy-turvy financial year for everybody, for many people, most people. And we are sensitive to that and we think this should be a priority. So.
Well, yeah.
It's a renewal of the taxes, first of all.
It won't go up. Rates won't go up.
I, I, you know, I, I think you're right. And I also, my next thought is, well, it's somewhat counterintuitive. But if, if COVID has done so many things, one thing it definitely has done for me and I think many others, it's just illustrated the importance of educating and delivering a great experience for our youth and to position them for, you know, for success. It, it really has exposed that. And so in a counterintuitive way, I think based on COVID and based where we are in this world today, it's more important than ever to get this bond approved, to make these investments. Again, safety, health, security, trust, confidence, and then innovative and then teacher housing for the sustainable, long-term. At the end of the day, we all know one thing in common, teachers matter most. For, you want a quality education for kids, teachers matter most. So if teachers matter most, we need to be investing, we need to make sure that there's a recruitment and a, and a, and a retention, and that translates down into quality housing. That's one of the key crucibles, right? It's one of the key principles. So.
Well, and the other important thing for the bond to, to make sure is clear is that we're retiring, we're, our old bonds are expiring. This is not, we're not asking for an increase in middle levy to support this. This is, this is not going to cost taxpayers more money.
That's right.
Uh, in any way.
So.
I have no other comments. I would like to say thank you, Dwayne, for all the hard work.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
And all the staff and administration, everyone's kind of kicking in. Yeah, we're pulling this together.
Great. Discussion item. Should we plan on making this more like 20, 25 minutes rather than 60 minutes?
Let's just start.
Let it go?
Yeah.
So it's now, okay. So, um, Theron or Dave? Dave?
Sure.
Sure.
Always interesting. So, you know, I'm watching the comments. Um, I, I would encourage people to read through the plan. I, I do, a lot of the questions should be answered in the plan. You know, uh, most of the plans in our area are not, uh, you know, I mean, there's a lot of influencing one another around plans. But in our plan, you know, we do address a number of the issues that are, uh, coming up on, on the chat board. I was kind of following, trying to follow that while paying attention to the meeting, which is always tricky. But the best way to go through that is, um, and, and to, you know, have this kind of conversation is, if you aren't doing that regularly, sharing their insights and recommendations. So, you, you know, um, one of the things to maybe think about is, uh, the leadership team is, you know, there's a lot of requests for us to, you know, start a little bit later. And, and I think, you know, I'm really hoping that the task force can take a look at that and, you know, give us a recommendation. You know, if you want another week, let's talk about that. What are we going to do during that week? You know, what does the planning piece look like? So that's kind of it. You know, I think folks are pretty familiar with the, the, you know, executive summary that Dwayne was talking about, you know? We're looking at pre-K to four because that, uh, and possibly five or six. Because those students are, um, you know, really, really, really low levels of, uh, transmittal in that, that age group. You know? Again, going back to CDE guidance, you know, those guy, those, those students could be in classes, um, without masks and without social distancing. And we're trying to do it with masks and possibly outside. Uh, and we're looking at, um, you know, how to increase, you know, the distance student to student. I do think it's important to recognize that that guidance, the social distancing guidance is for when you don't have your mask, right? And so the mask and six feet is ideal. Mask in less than six feet is, is okay. So, you know, that's an important note. But, and that was what the original, you know, draft of the plan was based on. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I kind of defer to the board. Uh, most of the answers are in the plan. What would you like to have happen?
Maybe we could maybe switch the agenda.
And have the public comments first?
Yeah, and I think if we're not.
Speaking the same.
Then, you know, kind of answer questions. Yeah, answer questions and let people.
I was.
Feedback and then they can refer to the planner, discuss certain things. I don't know.
The other possibility is that by going through the plan, maybe 80 to 90% of the questions would be addressed. So, um, I think that, um, we could start with public comment. And if it seems to be going, I mean, we don't have that many, um, signed up. We have nine signed up. And I think that would be a very good way to start. So let's do.
Good idea. And then if there are things that we feel like weren't addressed, we can sum that up or, or cover it at the end too.
Yeah, you know, give us a chance to, to further our dialogue. And if we need to deep dive into the, the policies, what I'm calling kind of the policy pieces of the, of the plan, then we can do so. But I really think there's some chances here for us to, to devise an approach that has some immediate momentum and some action.
So we usually, um, give each public commenter five minutes. We were going to try to make it three minutes because nine is more than we're usually used to, but we will play that by ear as well. So Tamara Wilson is first on our list. And what we can do is if someone's not quite connected, we can move to the next one and we'll come back to whoever we missed.
Um, is she there? Are you there, Tamara?
Here.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Hi, Tamara.
Hi. Okay, so three minutes. Quick. Um, I just wanted to say that I felt compelled to sign up for public comment after the town hall last week. Um, it became really apparent that teachers weren't feeling like their voices were being heard. And so I, I did want to say something as a teacher and also I'm a parent. I have two kids in the school district. And, um, I got to tell you that I am not feeling particularly safe about the elementary school right now. And I am concerned that because we live in such a wonderful place, it's easy to think that these bad things can't reach us here. And I am not willing to sacrifice one teacher, one student, one custodian, one executive assistant to COVID if we don't have to. Um, I understand the importance of in-person learning and I, I want my kids to have in-person learning, but I think the risk is too high. Um, I think constantly about if one of my colleagues, um, passed away, if we had a student that passed away, I don't know how we justify the need for in-person learning when there is an alternative. It may not be, you know, our favorite alternative, online learning, but I wouldn't trade somebody's life so that my student could have in-person learning. And that is what we're talking about. Um, we're talking about at the end of August, 180,000 lives that are going to be lost. And I also think sometimes that we miss the point that this isn't just getting a cold. There are people that are hospitalized, sick for months. We don't even know what the long-term damage is. So death is, is the most permanent problem, but there are so many other problems. And I think that we are risking a lot, um, in order to have in-person learning. And I just want people to think, is it worth your child's best friend? Is it worth your child's favorite teacher? Because that's what we're really talking about. And that's what teachers have to think about is, you know, whether doing the job that they love is worth their life at this point. And I just think there's a reality to that. The last thing I want to say is I've heard a lot of people in the community compare this to the risk of skiing or going rafting. And I got to say, if 150,000 people died in one ski season, I think we probably wouldn't ski. If 150,000 people died on the river this summer, I think we would be questioning whether or not we should go rafting. And I think that's how we have to look at it. We can't see ourselves as isolated from the rest of the United States. There are real dangers with COVID. And I just want teachers to feel safe for themselves and for their students and for their families at home that they possibly could be bringing this home to. I just think that it's not, it's not worth one life. My kid being able to go to class is not worth one life. So that's all I had to share. Thanks.
Thank you. That was only, uh, two and a half, three minutes. Wow. Okay, Sean Rios.
Okay, I have a written statement prepared. Um, so if we believe that public health is our priority, it's time for us to create a reopening plan that will keep our students, their families, our families, our staff, and the broader community safer. Approving the current reopening plan would be reckless. And although we are all mourning the loss of normalcy, know that any in-person reopening plan will not provide normalcy. According to the National Education Association, every reopening plan must meet the following requirements. The region's infection rate must be under control, which is not the case in our valley. The school community must have PPE available with testing and tracing in place. Schools must have the space to physically distance, which is not possible with full-size classes. Let's not pretend that the COVID case numbers in Picken County are an accurate representation of our entire valley-wide community. We are one. Picken County is not this isolated bubble. Our communities consist of three counties. And we know that just from looking at daily commuter traffic, right? That we're all interconnected. Um, throughout this planning process, Eagle and Garfield counties have been in red zones and we haven't been talking about that. We've only been talking about Picken County. And short-term tourists aren't even, aren't even reported in our county's case numbers. Let's also not pretend that we can compare ourselves to other countries who have successfully reopened. Those countries have done the two things that successful, um, to successfully reopen schools. They decreased infection rates significantly. And they provided substantial funds for schools to put safety, uh, measures in place. We've done neither one of those. Let's also not pretend that the proposed reopening plan is a hybrid plan. It's not a hybrid. It was labeled as such in an attempt to align with Picken County guidelines for safer-at-home status. That included operate, operating with 25 to 50% of the normal population. But in a hybrid model, a student attends in-person instruction part-time and online part-time to provide a capacity to decrease class sizes and allow for physical distancing. The current proposal, pre-K through six, full-time in-person instruction does not allow for the. allow for the necessary physical distancing. Let's also not pretend that we, in our world, know definitively about the spread of this new virus. We don't. The research on spread, the risks, the long-term effects of COVID is currently developing. We know that teens and adults do contract it and spread it. The research on whether young children are super-spreaders is new and emerging. Many of us have read about the studies on children and higher viral loads suggesting that they might spread the virus more efficiently. But that's all emerging. And also know the story of the Georgia sleepaway camp where 260 kids were, were tested positive in the first week. Until we have definitive information about this new virus, we have to err on the side of caution to protect all our community members. In the town hall meeting, a physician spoke of the safety of wearing masks, masks every day in the medical field, but let's not pretend that schools are as sanitary as medical facilities. Anyone who's spent any time in an elementary school or middle school knows that, right? You might have a kid picking his nose for the entire read aloud or, or kids who have a really hard time keeping their hands themselves, staying in their own space. That's just reality. Given that we have new district leadership, we need more time. Instead of approving a reckless plan today, let's go back to the drawing board and create a plan with public health as the number one priority. Together, we can create a safer plan, and the sooner we do that, educators can shift their focus back to the planning for meaningful instruction for students, which is what we all want. But first, we have to ensure the safety of all. We're all in this together. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. You only went a few seconds over, so it's perfect. Angelica Muljaro. And while we're waiting, we, we may move on to Michelle Hurley if Angelica doesn't speak up soon, but I would just wanted to address a couple of you have mentioned already. The town hall last Thursday, I just want to mention that the doctors group that Dave had called together, the Harvard Mass General Infectious Disease Specialist, who works with tuberculosis in Haiti, Serena Koenig, and Dr. Sean O'Leary, the pediatrician at University of Colorado, who advises the American Pediatric Association and the CDE and the CDPHE and a lot, and wrote a New York Times article about all of this, and head COVID himself. And then Jeannie Sebold, who's on the Pickens County Department of Public Health and is an anesthesiologist, who's worked with all the different types of masks and knows all about masks from her work with tuberculosis patients as anesthesiologist. And then there was two local, three local internists, myself, Chris Geisel and Brian Geisel. So the six of us wrote a letter. We were going to publish it in the, in the local media, and then there was a lot of concern we were hearing, and we thought, that's not the best way to reach everybody. We should have a town hall. So we asked to have a town hall instead, and we did not make it clear that it was really a medical, we wanted, and the board also wanted to know about safety before listening to a plan, whether it was safe to open is more important than anything else. And we wanted to know from the doctors, was it, Dave wanted to know, we want, the board wanted, we all, is it safe? And that's why we had that sort of very urgently, less than 24-hour notice to have that medical town hall. And we didn't specify clearly that it was going to only be medical. And so we apologize for that lack of clarity. But that may address some of the confusion about why it wasn't an opportunity for teachers to ask, to hear the answers to the question. So it really was just, is it safe? Is it not? What are the experts? What is the CDC, the CDE, the pediatric, American Association of Pediatricians? What are they, what are they all saying? New England Journal, what are they all advising right now? And so on behalf of the group that put that on, we apologize for the clarity, and I hope that answers some questions. Is Angelica available? Nope. So Michelle Hurley?
Hi, thank you guys for your time. I think my main concern is, and what I want to talk about, is I think it's great that the board and the superintendent have all taken time to meet and discuss plans, but the front line of all of this is our teachers, and they don't go into school till August 19th. You're asking them in a five-day period before schools open to clean out their classrooms, make space so that the kids can social distance, have a lesson plan that works around that, and still maintain and keeping the kids safe. I have a child that has special needs and learning disabilities, and more than anything, I would love to see him back in school. But for me, I'm not, unless you can guarantee me and tell me that the plan that you guys have and is so safe that, you know, kids don't get it, that my child's not going to get it, I don't understand why it's such a rush. Most of our teachers and staff come from Roaring Fork, from Garfield and Eagle. Why are we not following what the other Roaring Fork schools are doing in this area? You know, postpone it for a month, reevaluate it in a month. But the fact that we're rushing this doesn't make any sense. These are our kids. These are the wave of our future. If our teachers get sick, you know, I understand it sucks. I am a store manager. I have to look at taking another leave. But what am I going to do? Every time I get an email that school may have to shut down, I then have to rethink all of this. At least if we have a set plan, let the teachers get their feet wet and truly be a part of this situation and help make the solution. That's the only way we're going to be successful. The teachers are more than capable of jumping in, but you need to let them be in the, the environment that you're asking them to teach in. More and more information comes out every day from the CDC about younger kids carrying more of the virus than we're aware of. And I just think all of that needs to be considered. I mean, yes, our teachers have kids, too. Like, this is hard for everybody, but I just think
No. So, Michelle, you got cut off if you can hear me. So we're going to move on to Laura.
How long did I go off?
Just the last.
No, just basically the last thing I ended with was that you need to give the teachers the proper supplies and time to allow our kids to thrive, because the way that we're throwing them in in five days isn't giving them success, right? That's throwing a kid into a pool that doesn't know how to swim and hope he figures out how to swim to the side and not drown. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you so much. That was very powerful. I did want to just address, before we move to Laura, that while it is true that they have reported higher virus counts in the nostril, that hasn't correlated with higher transmission, I just wanted to say that for the record, because that's come up a few times. Laura?
Hi, my name is Laura Maker. I'm a community member here. And I, I wanted to speak to the board today because a plan is a detailed proposal of how to do something. And I would posit what the board has in front of it today is not a plan, but an aspirational idea. If this document's considered a plan, it's void for vagueness. It has no details. It has no specifics. Recognizing that we have less than one month out, we need to recognize that we don't have a plan. A plan would be based on an extraordinary energetic effort to educate our community and our kids in a safe, effective manner. Rather, what we have in front of us is a document that appears to be an approach to get to a plan based on information that's incomplete and inconsistent. So one of the, one of the things that struck me as I went through this document was the statement towards the very beginning of it, which I think I've heard repeated here today, that we know our younger students are far less likely to infect one another, adults and family members. And that's simply not correct. The CDC report from July 31st, 2020, I mean, we can all do the math, that's only three days ago. This is a landscape that's changing extremely fast, says that children aged six through 19 at that Georgia camp had a 76% positivity rate, a 51% attack rate for kids aged six through 10, a 44% attack rate, kids aged 11 through 17. Staff attack rate was even higher, 56%. And that CDC report goes on to say that these attack rates are likely an understatement of the actual rates. The body of evidence before the CDC demonstrates that children of all ages are likely susceptible to COVID, contrary to the early reports that, that they wouldn't play an important role in community transmission. These findings demonstrate that COVID-19 is spread effectively in a youth-centric setting, resulting in high attack rates among all age groups. One of the things that this community has really, I think, stepped up to the plate on is the six commitments, right? We all are taking personal action, and I think that this board needs to be aware that the action it takes has a disproportionate impact on our community. One of the things that is repeated over and over again is to avoid the three Cs: closed space, crowded places, and close contact settings. And that risk is particularly high when the three Cs overlap. That is exactly what we are talking about in this aspirational document here. I am asking you as a board to stand firm to your commitment to find solutions to these extraordinary circumstances, but what's proposed here today is not a, a solution. What's proposed here today has less of a scope and less of a robust public planning process than paddling paddleboards at North Star, right? Like, if we're talking about what matters in our, in our community, then our actions need to reflect that, and this document does not do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Catherine Gleason?
Hi, board. Name is Catherine Gleason. I have a prepared statement, and I am representing the fifth and sixth grade teachers. I'm a fifth grade teacher. We respectfully request that the Aspen School District delay the opening of school in any format until September 8th, so we may develop a thoughtful online learning curriculum for the month of September. We do not believe full-time, 100% in-person learning is a safe decision for our community at this time. COVID-19 cases have again increased recently in Pickens County, and our neighboring counties of Eagle and Garfield are considered red. Many teachers, students, and their families live in these neighboring areas. The recent outbreak in a Georgia school district shows that as school staff members return to work, transmission occurs. We are not doctors or nurses trained and committed to working with potentially ill patients and should not be asked to risk our health to do our job when there is a safe option available. Although there are many studies that show children do not transmit COVID-19, there are also numerous studies that show exactly the opposite. The information is coming at a rapid rate, and doctors have not had adequate time to peer review studies or complete studies of large populations. We cannot say that we know children do not transmit the virus because there is simply not enough data to make that statement. Until the science provides better guidance through peer reviews and large population studies, we should make decisions that keep all staff and students as safe as possible. Delaying our return will allow doctors to further study the transmission rates of COVID-19 between children and adults. We know that the American Academy of Pediatrics states a return to in-person learning is best for a child's overall health. This is true if the in-person learning includes a non-stressful, developmentally appropriate environment, time for socialization, exploration opportunities, and working closely with teachers and peers. Unfortunately, fear and uncertainty will be stressful overriding emotions for adults and students in the proposed plan. Constant concern about exposure and proximity to others is stressful in a 60-minute trip to the grocery store, let alone for seven hours a day, five days a week. Timed restroom breaks, physical distancing, appropriate mask-wearing, lunch in classrooms, and digital explorations all add to the stress of teachers and students. This is not the type of in-person experience desired by the AAP and valued in our community. If you have seen children in the halls and at recess, you know that it is not developmentally appropriate to ask them to maintain physical distance. Fifth and sixth graders struggle to walk, not run, on the right side of the hallway. In addition, expecting that children will be able to respectfully request others to move out of their space or wear a mask properly is not realistic. Children do not have a fully developed prefrontal cortex, control their reactions when they are scared or angry. Anecdotal evidence and news stories show that many adults do not respond calmly to these requests. Finally, our buildings are not ready for in-person learning. We know the HVAC systems need updating. As teachers, we have not been trained on how to properly manage mask-wearing and disinfecting classrooms. We also need time to develop new teaching methods that align with mask-wearing and physical distancing. Our current classroom arrangements and configurations do not allow six feet of separation. A delay will give our staff and facilities opportunities to meet these needs. Please consider our request regarding a delayed start to the school year and returning to learning through a digital platform for the first month. We know we can refine our online lessons and interactions and create a digital learning environment that focuses on social, emotional, and physical health in uncertain times. We can create better communication avenues between parents and staff regarding expectation and support. Give us a chance to do what we are trained to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Jamie Mahappy? And while we're waiting for Jamie, unless she's there.
There I am.
Great. Just, Jamie, if I may, Jamie, if I may say one thing before you start, I've heard a couple people refer to the plan, and I do see that in the agenda, it does say plan. The, the previous agenda said draft of plan. So I think that we missed a word in redoing the, the agenda, and we all expected this to be the draft of the plan, not the actual plan. So go ahead. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. And thank you. Many of you already know me. My name's Jamie Mahappy, and I have worked as a, in the school district, and been a parent in the school district for over 25 years. And I'd like, I think my colleagues and previous speakers, parents, have really spoken eloquently about the reasons why we need a delay. I'd like to go back and talk about the culture of our district and the culture of our community. And one of the things that the board taught us after we unanimously picked Dave to be coming in as our superintendent was to reach out to him and work together with him and to welcome him to our culture. And one of the things that we have always had is a huge part of our culture is this ability for staff and administration to work together in all of these innovative, creative programs that exist in our district today. We have also been able to, in the past, come together to solve very complex problems. We really need to get, have the time to do that with Dave. I think that as a teacher and as a parent, I've been inspired by the work that we can do together, and that was one of the big reasons why we chose to stay, was to bring back that feeling of trust and transparency, continue that kind of work within our culture. So I would like to say that in this unprecedented time that we have now, where emotions are high and people want to solve problems, again, our previous speakers have talked about how this science is emerging, but that together in a collaborative form, we can look at those needs, look at those science, and really draft a plan that has, that meets our shared purpose of a safe environment for all of our students and our staff and our families. And traditionally, with the input of our community, one thing that this community and school board has always done has been, has supported us with those decisions and trusted us in being able to come together to make those decisions. So I am hoping that we can move to what Dave has talked about so that we can do that, and if we need a, and we do need a delay in order to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Tara Nelson? Hi, Tara.
Hi.
Oh, great.
I was just going to share, as we
I was just going to share, as we talk about culture and climate and as we embark upon what's happening within our community, I feel the energy from everybody on this Zoom, even though I may not see you, I can feel a lot of fear-based emotion, and I just want to share, we took time from some parents in the community to just put together our perspective as we're all trying to determine what we're hearing from organizations within our valley and not within our valley, as from our community members, from our neighbors, from our teachers, from our administrators. We just wanted to prepare this letter. It was submitted to the board, and if you'd like me to read it out loud, I can. I know portions of it has been extrapolated and put into the AEA's presentation, too. But basically, we just wanted to lend our support from the, for the draft plans to reopen the schools for in-person learning for grades K through six, with all the precautions, the risk management measures in light of the COVID-19 for students and teachers. I haven't heard a lot today about those kids who aren't really surviving with online-based learning, and I just wanted to say we're losing a lot of those kids, too. I know that's on the forefront of everybody's mind, but we do agree broadly with the accepted science that you guys, that our board members and the experts have advised and what we have relied upon, that children, particularly younger children, have very low rates of infection and transmission. I know that there's some statistics that have been drawn out, so I have not looked at like what Laura was saying from July 31st, but with the very low rates of infection and transmission of this virus within our young kids, we agree that the mask usage is effective at controlling the spread of the virus. And if you want me to continue to read the the letter, I can continue on. I just want to say that.
Parents that signed this, so I think.
Yeah. This sounds like a good, I'd like to hear this letter, actually.
Okay.
Well, it sounds great.
We agree the proper mask usage is effective at controlling the spread of the virus, and while the masks are probably more important for protecting adult teachers and staff from affecting each other than among the kids, this overabundance of caution is appropriate and to be expected in the school setting. I do know that my kids do not give me any pushback with their mask-wearing, and it is something that we are trying to, that we have been in practice with for months now. With regard to the physical distancing, we agree this should be employed wherever and whenever possible. Yes is any case or scenario perfect or excellent, perhaps not. We understand there's no magic distance and that with the low risk they pose to each other, perhaps kids being kids sometimes happens, and perhaps that is okay. But yeah, that would be a hard maneuver to enact, but we do encourage outdoor learning as much as possible. It should be a no-brainer in our climate. The RMS is leaning heavily on outdoor learning this fall and should be looking to them for local advice. More importantly, we believe that in-person learning for young students in general poses few far risks to their overall health, well-being, and social-emotional development than the potential long-term presence of the novel coronavirus does. In-person learning is the most equitable option. Without it, a certain number of students experiencing barriers to learning online or from households that cannot support this will fall behind perhaps irreparably. And as such, the district would not fulfill its mission. Quote, "Students will realize their full potential, appreciate the relevance of their education, be excited to learn, be empowered for success within a district which strives to make safety for students and staff a priority." Involvement, input, and buy-in from teachers may be the most critical component of making this plan work, and I think today we're hearing that. While we won't speculate on their needs in this letter, there has been some feeling that teachers haven't been sufficiently involved in back-to-school discussions so far. And I did see the statistics from the AEA. I was not privy to what went on for that survey, but it does not sound like I want my children perhaps maybe to go into an environment and a climate that isn't conducive quite yet. So maybe that time does need to be melt out between the teachers and administration before us parents want to do that. But that being said, the feeling does need to be reversed immediately, and as teachers likely have the most questions or most aware of the details that need to be addressed for them to have confidence in the back-to-school plan. So teachers need to be treated like the essential workers, that they are given the tools they need to succeed. And finally, we did want to urge the board and administration to go with a plan that does bring the pre-K through six students back to in-person learning. The Plan B illusion of keeping the fifth and sixth graders at home, based on the scientific evidence that was presented in the last town hall and elsewhere, the thoughts about benefits outweighing risks as expressed above, we believe that the fifth and sixth graders generally fall under a category of needing to be in school rather than learning at home. And so this is especially eager for those in our district. Our fifth graders are very eager because they are in their first year of middle school, so they want to see that physical space, they want to be back near their peers as much as they can and being in an in-person environment, since it is in a totally new environment, school-wise, schedule-wise, structure-wise, and academic-wise. So we just wanted to say thank you for considering our comments, and we do have a list of local community members, parents, and their children, age groups listed on this.
And how many did you say signed this letter?
I believe there was close to 100.
Wow.
We're in the 80, I didn't actually count them, but I think we're around 80. We just started circulating that yesterday.
Wow.
And we did have to stop sharing it because we do want to submit it on time. So we did recommend that anybody that had additional comments just to sign up for your talk, public comment.
Can we get, can we get a copy of that?
You got, it was, it came in your email before the meeting, about an hour before.
If you don't have a copy, Eliza should be able to provide it to you and/or I can send it to you directly. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Lisa Demento. Here we are, in person. It's very exciting.
So you may need to come up here for, to be on the speaker, I would think. Don't, I would think. Oh, will she be heard regardless?
Sit on the chair. Dwayne placed the chair perfectly.
It's not a chair, it's a table, but. Hopefully it will, it's like solid enough. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, there's no one who wants to get back to in-person learning more than your educators right now. We understand that. We do. Safely back to school. But right now, there is no conclusive data that younger children do not spread this virus, and data changes about every other day. I had COVID. I had the antibodies. I was tested at Valley View. Very ill the end of January. In the elementary school, there was a strange virus going around where our kids had high fevers. The nurse's office was filled. I had two kids on my carpet, and Tony Richards came in, 102, 102. Was it COVID? We don't know. There was no contact tracing around them. All I know is there is no conclusive data that younger children do not spread this virus. But I do want to thank you today for the opportunity to speak. We are ready to go back when it is safe. And we do want a successful return to learning for the 2020, 2021 school year. We do need clearly stated safety protocols for each building, communicated by all the administrators to our teachers, to our staff, to our families, and to the students. Arm us with the time needed to get ready. Time to communicate with our families, our new families. There are 40 new families coming into the district. Two of those five days that we spend, we have five days to get ready. Two are spent communicating with our families. Two are spent with professional development. One day is usually spent getting our classrooms ready. We need time. Time to plan for possible outdoor learning and the logistics that surround it. Time for professional development around quality distance learning, when we have that rapid return to online learning, which we all know that will happen. We hope not, but I was in a professional development on Wednesday, last Wednesday, with Margaret Romero. I would like to share that with my team, and I feel the elementary school can get notebooks ready. So if we have this rapid return to online learning, that we're ready for quality distance learning, quality distance learning. That will probably take two days. We need professional development around the new technology that we're going to be getting. We need professional development, and this is so important, around the social-emotional impacts that this global pandemic has done to our nation, to our families, to our kids, to our staff, to our family, to everybody in this community. We don't know yet the impact on this trauma and the stress that has been caused by this global pandemic. I would rather listen to a panel of child psychologists right now in our professional development that can relate to us, strategies, and ways to affect, to talk to our children about what's going on. That's what, I would love professional development around that. We need online, grade-level, school-wide cohort collaborations around the three scenarios to open. We also need time for our maintenance department, you already heard this, to fix our dilapidated HVAC system, which blows very cold air in my classroom in the wintertime and no movement of air when it's warm. We need to come up with risk mitigation strategies around movement around our school, the congestion areas, bus transportation, lunches, and then limiting the number of contacts we will have during the day. The consensus I have gotten from reading this plan just two nights ago from the draft plan and discussing it with my fellow colleagues is that we need time. We need time to push back a delayed start for students to return, but we also need time to get into our classrooms. I'm willing to go next week. You have, you have teachers that are ready to start this week, next week, to roll up our sleeves and let's get going. Both Eagle County and Roaring Fork have reopening plans. Let's take a look at their plans. But given the opportunity and time, with Dave, together, we can create a plan for the safe reopening of our schools and for the safety of our students, our families, the staff, and the people. Thank you, I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Lisa, very much. And then, let's see, it's 5:27. Anyway, I lost track of time, but that was fine. Ada Flat.
Go, Ada.
I teach second grade. Thanks for giving me a minute here. I was reading the reopening plan, and I read, "At the elementary level, it will be a mostly normal school day," and that's why I felt that I needed to comment. I balked when I read that statement in the reopening plan. That one statement is hugely misleading. "We have created collaborative classrooms at AES where our students thrive on close partnerships with teachers and peers alike. In a normal hour at work, my students find themselves moving throughout whole-group activities at desks or in a circle, small group, partner, and individual workstations. We transition at least every 20 minutes so that blood continues to flow and engagement is maintained."
No, that's her, Mel.
Your sound is breaking up, Ada. Your sound is breaking up. Can she hear me?
You all know. Spend a lot of time on these calls.
Got it. Ada, turn off your.
Let me call it, go on the next one.
Okay.
Okay, let's do someone else while she's.
Is this better without the camera?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do you need me to start over?
No. I mean.
Move back about a minute.
A minute, go back a minute.
Okay. So I was talking about how we've all created collaborative classrooms at AES where our students thrive on close partnerships with teachers and peers alike. "In a normal hour at work, my students find themselves moving throughout whole-group activities at desks or in a circle, small group, partner, and individual workstations. We transition at least every 20 minutes so that the blood continues to flow and engagement is maintained. This alone, the basic, physical formatting of the classroom, is only the tip of the iceberg when it comes to what will need to be changed in terms of instruction. I currently pour over student work with my kids for much of my day, crouched next to desks or sitting together in our classroom couch or leaning across a two-foot-wide table, and this is where the learning happens. Weeks at the start of the school year are filled with activities that encourage students to get in each other's physical space so that they can get to know and trust one another. I tie shoes and peel clementines and hug away tears. My most effective behavior management tool is my face and the expressions that I make. All of this and so, so much more has to be rethought by every single teacher. I understand that outdoor learning will be a huge asset, but teaching outside comes with a whole new host of challenges that will be far cry from mostly normal. Bathrooms, storage, materials, I don't know if you've seen the amount of materials we use in elementary school, comfort, rewriting lessons that we've never intended to teach without certain technology or in a different environment. You can tell me over and over again about the couple of studies that have occurred in which young children don't seem to transmit COVID-19 too much. Every day, I'm reading articles that tell a developing story as schools start to reopen. I am not in a place where I cannot be nervous about contracting an illness which has too frequently serious or fatal effects, from which we still have previously healthy teachers recovering from March infections and for which we still have no idea what the long-term effects may be. I will be keeping students away from me and away from one another to the best of my ability. Aspen says you can't even walk past someone else without wearing a mask, but 20 unrelated students are going to be taking their masks off in each cohort to eat lunch, to snack twice a day, to drink water countless times, to blow their noses, to scratch their chins, to readjust their face coverings, the list goes on. Ensuring families of their safety upon execution of the proposed plan, in my opinion, is irresponsible at this point. There's not a plan in place that we've seen. I'm used to working above my pay scale as a school teacher, but I don't even know who's qualified to make some of the decisions that are left to make here. I won't be responsible for gambling on choices that ultimately end up being at the expense of my students, my community, and my own family's health. If you really are trusting the experts, please listen to the experts you have pleading with you from your own front lines, the teachers at AES with hundreds of years of cumulative experience doing exactly what your work, wondering how best to do. We currently are looking at three workdays. We have two assessment days as well, but one of those days is full of district mandated meetings. So you're asking us that we reopen the school entirely to kids after two days. We are telling you, with that much time to prepare, there's no way we will be able to adequately execute for safety or instruction in the classroom, much less the potential or the inevitable jump to online learning that you've ensured our community will be breathed easy should we need to close when students or teachers start coughing or running fevers. The title of the plan, "Phase-Hybrid Opening," should really reflect its contents. Currently, the elementary school plan sounds more like a full rushed, fingers-crossed reopening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ada. And then, should we go back to Angelica? Is she available now? We want to give her another try. Is there anybody that can, I guess we would have known, I think Eliza would have texted me if there were any more additions. So I think.
I don't know how else you manage it with 260 people on the call.
Yeah. So I think Eliza has been giving me texts to add. So I think we can move on. Thank you very much, everybody. And.
Yes, thank you.
So, action items.
Well, no. Are we not going to comment on this section? Are we still in the discussion?
So, return to learning. Let's go, okay, let's go back to, sorry. But we want to go back to 5.1 and actually discuss this, whether it's Theron or Dave leading the discussion. I'll defer to you two. Dave?
Yes, I was just unmuting. No, I mean, again, want to thank everyone for sharing their thoughts and insights. This was never intended to be the nuts-and-bolts plan, but merely like, this is where we're going, and so I want to be very clear about that. You know, but until we even had this conversation, we couldn't even begin to. we couldn't even begin to talk about what the plan would look like. I will tell you that there are many, many moving pieces. We were supposed to be meeting, you know, just responding to some of the comments that I've been seeing and also been hearing, you know, and, and, you know, we are meeting with the Picken County Sheriff's Team that's sort of assigned to our campus. They were going to come this morning, and I think we're rescheduled for tomorrow. You know, appreciate you bringing up these plans or these concerns. You know, no one is trying to put teachers or kids in harm's way. And we have to make decisions based on the information we have. And we work very closely with the Picken County. And, and I've heard we're Eagle, you know, we're the whole valley. We're all the way down to rifle. And, and I'm not not acknowledging that. I am acknowledging that. But at a certain point, you know, we had to make a decision, and we were directed by the Colorado Department of Education, which is where all of our data comes from, as well as recommendations for opening. It comes from their guidance. You know, that's where we're getting our information. And, you know, it's in some of the hyperlinks in, in this not quite a full-blown plan. So, you know, Theron, you've been integral in this conversation. What are your thoughts on this?
Sure. Let me just say a couple of things. First of all, thank you so much for all of the information we've been hearing from our speakers tonight. It's greatly appreciated. And certainly, I can say from the standpoint of Samira Wilson and Catherine Wiesn, I've had the opportunity to have a personal conversation with each of them regarding reopening and also parents and all the folks at AES. Thank you so much for all the input that we've been getting around the plan. And I think I wanted to say one thing about this. Dave has, and myself, been intimately involved in all of these plans that have been put out by not only consortium of superintendents across our region, that would be the Eagle, from Eagle County.
Theron, someone's saying they can't hear you. Do you want to step closer to the speaker?
Here's the speaker.
Sure, right there.
Sit right there? Did you need your computer? No.
So, we had, I don't know how much, all of you guys heard that, but just basically, we've been in contact with multiple superintendents. We received last week on Wednesday the guidance from the Colorado Department of Education, and then on Friday, an amendment to that that's telling us how to contact trace in classrooms. So just know, this information is unfolding as we speak and very, and very rapidly. So we're trying to make sense out of things as they come together. And I just got to say, I want to say something about us and who we are as a community, because I think when we look back at what we had to do, when we had to close very rapidly, we did a great job as a team, as a, as both teacher and administrative team. We did a great job under the worst of circumstances doing an online education program with our students. In addition to that, we were able to capitalize on a few of the great events that can occur. There's just one chiefly among them is our graduation. And how that happened, because is a huge and careful deliberate planning with lots of agencies. And I can assure you that same process is happening right now with our health department. We're meeting John Peacock and M A T. All those groups are being consulted. Nobody's trying to do anything under the table. In fact, everything is completely above board, and every single one of those boards are addressed, and they have a chance to review our thinking around these plans. And not only do they review our thinking, Dr. Bond and myself invite their very, very close scrutiny of what we're doing. So just know that none of that would ever be done without that careful consideration moving into this. Now, very clear to me is the idea of time. I think that when I've heard all these teachers and when I have, you know, the teachers that I've had a chance to talk to face-to-face, giving me the sideline class, "Could you give us more time?" We're listening. That is something that we can definitely talk about and get that going. And just know that we will review what we can, we can do and consider the safety of the students and the teachers first before any decisions are made. And I also just want to say. See, you got to keep hold one another accountable. I just got reminded my mask was falling down.
Thank you.
I just want to say that.
Better than your pants.
Is it?
So I would say this, I just, I just want you guys to know that we are definitely interested in making this, this work. We have an outdoor task force working. In addition to that, we have input from the Picken County Sheriff's Department, making sure that if we do do outdoor classrooms, they're also going to be safe. All those things are being considered. And I just wanted to give a big shout out to our building principals. They have been working under the worst of conditions to get those specifics that all of you are asking for. I know that we have Chris Baston at the elementary school. We have Liz Mater and Jason at the little school. And we have Sarah Strasburger. And now Becky Oliver doing a great job trying to put together what this three-tiered plan would look like. And they're doing it with that ever-shifting landscape, because every time I swear we give them a directive, it changes. So just know, it's, it's hard to pivot every time that occurs. And we'll, we'll be doing that. Now, it sounds like we need to open this up to more voices into those teacher rooms. We will figure out how to make that happen and make sure that you're in contact with your principals and have a chance to participate in some of that leadership planning that's going on, because I think that that would be, go a long way to move us through this. So that's kind of where I am in a nutshell. The only thing I can say is I know that we can do this together if we all pull together and make it work. We did it for graduation. We did it for the summer camps. We can do it for school. And that just means that all of us are going to have to listen to one another and find a solution to get through this, you know? We just have to have the trust in one another to be able to confront the brutal facts that we have right now and just know that we will prevail in the end when this whole thing is completed. So.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Theron.
I did, I like, I wanted to emphasize trust and respect. And what Susan Merold always says is that it's not us against them. We're all in exactly what Theron said. We're all in this together, and we all know that we're, everybody in, on this Zoom, 286 plus us, we all want the best for kids. Everybody knows that. That kind of goes without saying.
Can we now take it to the board and deliberate a bit?
I think so.
Is that cool, Susan? Are you a person of deliberation?
Yeah, one thing I just want to clear up is that we won't be voting today in this plan. And that's, that was originally on the agenda. We heard, you know, that we need to take some time and, and get some feedback, more feedback and more voices on it. And so we're not voting today. We're just going to do a little discussion and some planning for how to move forward. So I just wanted to clear that up before anybody wondered more.
Do you want to assert, Dwayne, or?
Yeah, I do.
It looks like it.
I'm trying to kind of accelerate this to a certain degree, just recognizing that there's two, two things I think we can all agree upon. One, the teacher's voice from the teacher's view has not been sufficiently taken into account, has not been listened to. They feel, they don't feel connected. There's no buy-in. That's a, I think that's abundantly clear. And I think they've done a professional job of articulating that, number one. Number two, time. It's a stressful time, as has been stated. Can I make a recommendation to the board and the administration, anyone else that's listening, two things? One, I propose and put on the table that the district consider a delayed start. And, and don't quibble about it. Don't, don't mince words about it. Recognize a start after Labor Day, however we start, be it online, be it in class, but starting after Labor Day. Invest an amount of time that I think that the teacher cadre is telling us that they need. And I would, I would argue that the administration and all the support agencies would agree with that need, with that statement, that they need time as well to articulate the details of the plan. Number one. Number two, it feels to me that we have this task force that was mobilized a couple, three weeks ago that is overpopulated. It's frankly too big. And I don't think it's a good kind of tiger team type of model where it's a good cross-section of all of the agencies and constituencies that need to be represented. In other words, if you want to achieve a consensus plan, you got to get slices of all of the constituencies that are represented at the table and allow them the freedom of action to determine a true detailed plan that we can all buy into. And we were saying this over the weekend. I've had conversations with various board members. I've had conversations with the superintendents. I've had conversations with teachers. I do believe that for us to get this off of dead center, to move this off the impasse, we have to re-energize and remobilize a committee, a task force, a tiger team, whatever we call it, that is, they're deputized and they're energized, and they have the responsibility of coming back with a consensus plan that we as an organization can collectively adopt. And we need the time to get there to articulate all the logistics, the support agencies, the concept of the operation, and all of the various tactics that make up a plan of implementation. It's got to have this final piece of adaptation and flexibility. None of that's here right now, other than guidelines, principles, statements of standards, which are all great. They're the start. But we need to re-energize and re-engage the smaller task force. Give them the authority to come back with a plan, but to take the pressure off of the whole system, push out the start. It's two weeks. It might actually be the key element to success here. Push out the start a couple of weeks. I know a lot of parents are going to complain and howl on that, but if you put it in context, we're not ready right now. And the folks that had to deliver the service, they had to deliver the education, are throwing up red flags. How in any good faith could we force this model to go forward on August 25? It just doesn't resonate with who we are. Not at all. So can we put that on the table? Could we debate that? I feel like we've kind of gone around and around about this constituency says this, and we're wanting to do that, and the plan is not a plan. It's like, all right, got it. There's a statement of fact. Now let's move on with a new recommendation.
So I just want to ask a, just a logistical question. If we start two weeks later, do we have, will there be enough contact hours in the course of the year so we wouldn't have to go into June?
I would assume we'd have to go late.
Would we have to go into?
I, I would assume that there'd be some extension. I would also assume that we're pretty humble as an organization. We could probably absorb a day or two here throughout the course of the year. We're fairly intelligent with that. And maybe if there's a but, like three or four or five days into June, my hope is that the whole organization would say, "Thank you. That's a much safer day than right now." And if we have to spend a few extra bucks, that's why we have the capital reserve for extraordinary events such as this. Amen.
Any other? At least, we were, oh, you're just putting your thumb up.
But there are leadership teams in each school. Let's, let's draw on what they're doing. I think they are. There are leadership teams that are coming in. Chris and Sarah met with our leadership.
Yeah.
We were so inspired by what the solutions were coming out of. We need solutions.
That's where.
Move towards.
Yeah, that's, so that's where some of the deputies would be able to be sourced from, if you think about it. The principals need to be in the conversation. Some of these thought leaders within the, within the grades. I think that's perfect. But Lisa, we have to also constrain it. If you're going to ask a task force and a tiger team to do something and come back to the large organization with a meaningful plan, you got to keep it to some level where it's not group think at 40 different. 12 to 15 people means that they have to make compromise at the table in the interest of the greater good, which is the entire community. They have to drop some of their priorities. So I can't have an entire leadership team come in there and just say it's our way or the highway. It has to be a cross-section. They have to be willing to compromise.
That's not what I meant. I meant, I meant that we have leadership teams in each building. And they have, our leadership team met. We got information from them. They are ready to move forward. And we were, and there was a consensus, like, great, this sounds great. Let's walk the perimeter. Let's see where we can put tents up. Where can we put wagons? Where it can be imposed?
Yeah, 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 I do, totally.
Thinking that it's going to take to do outdoor learning, the logistical thinking that it's going to take to do a rapid return. These are leadership teams that have thought this.
There's the deputies. There are the deputies.
So Lisa, we need to listen to Katie. She's been trying to speak for a while.
Yeah, so I, excuse us.
Clarify. Are you talking about? So we were originally scheduled to have teachers come back. If I remember correctly, the 20th?
19.
The 19th?
The 19th is the start date of stuff.
And then we were going to do in-class learning the 27th.
No, it was initially the 26th.
25th or 6th?
It's Wednesday or Wednesday, I believe.
Okay, so that was the extra day.
We approved two extra, a couple of extra days.
A couple of planning days. So now you're saying that, what, after Labor Day means what?
After Labor Day, children would come back. So maybe it's a completely online, maybe it's half and half, maybe it's a hybrid model, whatever the case may be. But that would be determined in a new task force. It gets down to the bloody details of articulating a plan. And so, so.
But just let me, let me ask, so when would the teachers come back?
In my view, in my view, it's still the 19th. It's still the 19th. By the way, as has been stated by several important teachers, we come back in, we got a couple of days to have some professional development. We have a couple of days to engage with new parents and families. Then we have this one day to prepare a class. Hey, guess what? Now we're giving you two extra weeks. And, and by that time, God willing, we have a revised, more detailed plan that would have been articulated between tomorrow, the 4th of August, out to the 7th or 8th of September. Like now we got some breathing room and take some pressure out of the system. Right now everyone's fighting because they're, they're afraid of one or two days. And it's like, are you kidding me?
Nobody's fighting. People are asking very good questions.
And I want to remind everyone on the call and in the room here, our district leadership, our district leadership has done an amazing amount of work in a very, very, very short period of time. We have, as we know, we, we as a community, we as a board led some changes. And so that has to be acknowledged and respected. And, and you know, for that, we're both proud, but we're also recognizing it creates additional pressures and stress. So I don't want anyone to feel that our district leadership hasn't been working their fannies all. Every one of them has been doing the same thing that all of the teachers have been doing, which is to say, thinking, collaborating, you know, war gaming, troubleshooting, trying to figure this out. But we need a cross-section that can represent all of the constituencies and bring back a brokered compromised plan that works as a consensus for the community. That's it. We have, and we, we as a board have to be willing to let go some of the reins and some of the controls, not all of it. Ultimately, we respond to the community. But we have to give these folks the confidence that what they're going to come up with, we're going to fight like hell to support. We're going to go out of our way to support it. So they have to have that level of confidence and trust as well, such that they do good work in a short amount of time. If we don't get there, we're just going to like fumble right into the school year, and it's going to just look like a bucket of spilled doo-doo. And it's just not going to be right.
I would like, did you really just say doo-doo?
I didn't say the other word.
You know.
That's what I was surprised about.
You know, but there was, there was some criticism by, by the teacher survey of us about some of our.
First words?
A little bit.
It was all you.
Katie?
Okay, so I just want to say a couple of things first before I kind of get into the, the, the concept here, which is first of all, I want to acknowledge how hard this is, this pandemic is for everybody. It's hard on our entire community. It's hard on the kids. It's hard on everybody throughout the world. So we're, we're in this together. And I want to make sure that there were some intonations throughout this process that, that we didn't get it. We get it. We're living it too. And we have family members who may be elderly or may be vulnerable. And we have family members who may be elderly or may be vulnerable. And it's, my brother has a son who is quadriplegic and he's in a facility and they haven't been able to see him for six months. And he's, you know, he's completely non-verbal. It's been extremely, extremely difficult. So, you know, I want to express my condolences for anyone who has lost anybody, for anyone who's sick, who has not regained their full capacity. And you know, it's horrible, this is a horrible, horrible disease that we're dealing with. And it's not going away anytime soon from what I can see. I also want to let, on a personal note, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails from teachers throughout this time and from community members about at-risk populations. And I also want to kind of let you know that I too am at risk, I have type 1 diabetes. It's relatively new, last year and a half. So I get it, you know, but I'm following the science on it. You know, I'm talking to my doctors, I'm listening to things, and we all have our own personal medical issues. So please know that as a board member, I am certainly coming from a place of understanding that we are all dealing with this and we all have our own issues. I am a scientist, I studied engineering, I'm very much a math and science person, and I can't help but think about following the science. And so when we get a letter from a group of doctors in our community who are incredibly intelligent and well-respected in their fields, I'm going to listen to them. So, you know, my first comment about this, about the doctor list is that they believe the science says it is safe. And I am not going to go through and read every single study that comes out, and every single article and every single news source to try to figure out what's really going on. We have to listen to the experts, we're listening to the experts from our doctors, we're listening to the Board of Health, we're listening to the county, we're listening to the city, we're listening to the current.
The competition is happening all over.
Yep. Sorry. Somebody else is speaking?
Eliza, can you mute?
Can you mute? Yeah, can you mute? Um, so we have nothing, as elected officials, we have no ability other than to listen to the experts in terms of the ability to go back safely in the classroom. What we can't do as elected officials and as a school community is lead by fear and by rumor and by anything other than the science and the experts. Part of those experts are obviously the teachers and the staff. So let me just be clear, the medical community, from what I'm hearing, we have a path, we have a path to go out. And then we have to figure out from the educational experts what that path is. So I am fully confident that we can find a plan that can open safely in person and have a plan for what happens when we move out of this current situation we are in. We are in the current zone and we have to make the plan for the current zone. If we are going to move to another zone, then we have a plan for that zone, either way, right? So I truly believe that we can find a way to open safely and by following public health guidelines to a T, not by our opinion of them, but to a T of what the public health guidelines are saying. I also believe that we can get to the synchronous model in a reasonable amount of time, but respect the fact that the teachers are asking for some additional time. But what I don't know, and what I don't hear consensus on, is how much, right? So what I would propose to modify to your plan, Duane, is to have a small group, and I would say, I mean, logistically, no more than 12. I would say that if we could get some administrators and a couple of teachers to get together in a room and to knock it out and to come back early, come back now, well, let's pay it, let's pay the teachers who aren't on salary yet, come back now, work this plan out, and come back in a week with an update. And in that week, the update would include a synchronous model for learning, hopefully in-person for some portion or some part of the day. And then it will also include an ask for how much time they need, opposed to just giving a blanket, oh, well, we think two and a half weeks will work. I don't know if two and a half weeks will work. So let's say, come back with a model. I think at the same time we do that, we need to start, from what I hear, the substitute issue is a problem. And I hear that there's a lot of paperwork to get that done. I have personally started speaking to people about coming in and subs, and the response is overwhelming, as a call to service. So community members and parents who are listening right now, I am putting out a call to service right now. I would do it myself if it wouldn't be a complete conflict of interest, I think it might be. If it gets to the point where I can, I would totally go in and sub. Your kids will hate me, but I'll do it. They'll hate me because I'm strict. But I put out the call of service, and I think we as a community, and I'll put this on Theron, not Dave, because I think this is probably you, Theron, we need to get the paperwork started, we need to expedite, find a way to get it done quickly and easily. I've heard that it takes about six weeks, so, to get through the process of the state. So I would argue that perhaps we should put that call of service out right now and try to get it started, to help alleviate some of these issues, to help get some more people in. And I would be completely supportive of going through that. But I also will say, and then I'll be quiet, is that, you know, I am looking for a, and I think the kids in the community and the taxpayers deserve a synchronous model, we got to find a way to get kids back to school. And as I said, the experts are telling us that we can do that in a safe way at this point in time. So let's find a plan that does that.
Thank you, Katie. And Susan, you want to chime in? Or Jonathan to go next?
Yeah, I'll chime in just a second. I do believe that we need to take some time and we need to make sure that we have listened to our experts in our district, our teachers and staff, who know the building, they know the students, they know what it takes to make them feel safe. And that's important, and it's critical to them doing their job that they do well. And so we have to really honor that. And so taking some time and coming up with a group who will really work on details and all sides of, because you solve one problem and there's a whole nother side to it. And I think we've got to really anticipate all of those things, and it is going to take some time. But I'm absolutely supportive of letting our task group, task force with a group of teachers that are representative of all positions in our district. And so they can express why they might not feel comfortable and how can we address that, and why they do feel comfortable, and let them address that as well. And board members, administrators, we should probably have some, a medical professional on there of some sort, and parents, DAC members, something like that, so that we have a parent representative or several on there as well. But it needs to be able to meet frequently, hash out the details, maybe divide into groups, but I'm absolutely supportive of that. And I know we can do it, we can work together and we can figure out how we do this. And we've done it before in so many instances. So our community is innovative, they care about each other, and we can do it together. So I'm actually very, you know, optimistic about what we can do when we start all working in the same direction. That's all.
Thank you. And Jonathan?
Yeah, I would just, important things to emphasize, especially what Katie said around, you know, being very sympathetic to everybody who is in this situation and everything, and that it's got the disease, my in-laws got it, you know, luckily they had no symptoms. There are other family members that have it now, so it's obviously every, when that's happening, you're worried about it. I want to believe that, you know, in one of our clients in Ohio that has it now. So these are things that we're all worried about and all concerned about and wanting all these people to completely get through this with no issues at all. So that's.
Somebody wants you to move towards the microphone better.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it that one or is it that?
I don't know.
It is that one? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just sit here like there. Can you hear me better now, everybody, hopefully?
Yeah.
The other thing I'll say is that this is the third time that I've kind of been through this cycle. The first time was when it happened, we do have a plan in Ohio that never closed, and we've only had one person get sick in this whole time. That person got sick from outside the facility. So that's over 600 people going to work every single day, all adults, going to a factory, working close quarters. And so if you plan to be safe, and you are safe, then you can get through this with very low risk. So it's just one of those things to think about. Those guys didn't have all this extra time, they had to develop all this on the fly. And, you know, so that was one. And so those guys got through it pretty quick, they put down the procedures and they kept working. The other example was people got a lot of time off, like what we're having here, and when it was time to start again, there was a lot of anxiety, just like we're experiencing right now. It's natural, it's a normal spot to be, so I don't think that, you know, we shouldn't be too worried about it because you got to get everybody's questions answered, you have to come in and do the work, like we were talking about, like, what's my classroom going to look like? What are the bathroom breaks going to look like? Where are we going to have the hand sanitizer? All those kinds of things. So I think that's just normal. I definitely agree with the idea of more time. I would also agree with Katie as, you know, I don't know that Labor Day is the right day. I think it would be more for Dave and Theron to come up with a plan and say, okay, here are the things we need to do. This is the in-facility training that the teachers and everybody needs and all this stuff. So we can plan for those activities so they can happen, so that everybody can feel comfortable about what needs to go on. And then the last thing I will say is, my son was in North Carolina all summer, and he was, had class for workers after school, daycare basically, for the essential workers. And he was able to do it. I mean, he said there was definitely, in the beginning, it wasn't that easy with the kids, but then you, you know, laid on the law, everybody wears their masks, they were super strict about it, and they said it was just fine, you know. So I think definitely it's going on, it can be done, but we just got to make sure that everybody feels safe and that it's the responsibility of everybody. This is the biggest thing that we found is successful is making sure that we're all taking care of each other, holding each other accountable, and following the protocols. And that's the most important thing, to make sure everybody's safe. So that's what I would say.
Just a question for you, Jonathan? That was great. You said it's up to Theron and Dave. Would you, we were talking about putting that on the task force to decide how much time they need, is that, I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, I think what would be good to see is basically, you know, we have, and if we use whatever day, you know, we originally wanted to start on this day, we had three days of time, if I understood correctly, to plan under that scenario. And here's all the additional things we need to do that is not, that is in a COVID scenario, and that's going to take us three more days, it's going to take seven more days, I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take, but you need to sit down there and map it out. And that's obviously the work that needs to be done with the task force and the teachers. And so they can sit down and say, okay, you know, I need to be in my classroom for a day where somebody explains to me the cleaning procedures, where I'm going to have the cleaning materials, you know. You just got to set all that stuff up and it takes a little while to get it done, and there's lots of things that you need to do. But I don't know if it's Labor Day or before Labor Day or after that date. So I think that's what has to come together.
The other thing is, I think also, you know, we don't have a plan for 7 through 12 that's articulated in too much detail to come. And I think that that needs to be worked on now as well. So opposed to kind of starting K through 6 and putting those guys online and then doing it, I think if we take this time, I'd also want to put it on this task force to have a reopening, full reopening plan for not just remote learning for 7 through 12 to start, but let's look at the possibilities of doing, of at least mapping out the whole thing. I mean, I think we need some very clear deadlines, I think we owe it to the parents to have very clear deadlines. But I'm willing to, you know, give it a week or so to get there on what the plan is, you know. I don't know, I just, I don't know if that's adding more to it too much, we didn't really, we didn't really articulate it, we just talked about a team looking at it. So what do you guys think about making sure that we're including the whole 7 through 12?
In terms of like having a proposed start date for them?
Yeah.
For in-person?
Yeah, exactly. A proposed in-person for everyone plan, not just talking about K through 6, just to be clear.
Agreed. But I think what's helpful in those things is, under what conditions do we move to that next stage? So what are our, you know, here's check the box, for whatever condition is met, this condition is met, you know, this condition is met, you know, things like, okay, we've been in school now for, you know, three weeks and, you know, zero cases, I don't know what the condition is, but, you know, those things make it easy then to kind of either move forward or pull back, because we're going to have, it's going to be a dynamic thing, right? So.
I would argue that the conditions of the plan is currently tied to, which are public health conditions, and, you know, are very clear and unarguable. I mean, and I think it's important to listen to the public health community and what the public health orders are regards to that.
I agree completely, but I think there is, I mean, I didn't quote the right guideline, but isn't there a guideline there, and correct me here, Dave, that is, like, whatever, two people, a certain number of people get it if you're open?
That's in the guideline though, like that is, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. But so, okay, check the box.
They just submitted the guideline on, or how to do that, how to do that, so.
Right.
Yeah, so those, I mean, I would just say, we were moving to path, the date to reopen is, for this additional group, would be the following, based on the following key, you know, key suspect or whatever, key indicators that we're in compliance with. Just like it is today, we're in a county that is in this zone, we operate a certain way.
Yeah, and obviously if we change zones, the plan changes. And we need a plan for what we do, but I think the first, what we do when that happens, what we do when someone gets sick, what we do when the community moves to a different zone. But I think this task force needs to focus on where we are right now.
If we're willing to engage in this model, number one, I want to make sure we're checking in with Dave and Theron, I want to make sure you guys see this as being internally consistent with the framework that you had in your mind and the framework that you've articulated thus far, number one. Number two, I'd like to check in with Kay to make sure that, from her view and the team that, the association that she represents, that it's internally consistent with their thinking, which is to say, it's getting and inserting teacher leaders into this task force to fully develop the detailed plans, knowing they have expert knowledge that needs to be considered in those details, two. And then three, I put this out, knowing everything that we just described over the last eight minutes in terms of additional, by the way, they're all very good comments that further define and detail out a plan, which means the plan becomes bigger and more comprehensive and frankly, in some ways, more cumbersome. So here it is, so it's the 3rd of August right now. My view is that to get to that level of definition and detail would be just Herculean work in one week's time. I would say, just knowing what, just based on my experience, I'd like to say Friday of next week, you guys come back with a consensus plan that you guys have thrown up on, you've kicked it around, you tested it, you rebooted it, and now you believe in it. And now it's our job to kind of get behind it and to support it by the end of next week, which by the way, now starts to suggest whether or not an extension of two weeks or so from August 26 of kids versus September 8th or 9th, whatever it is. And don't be, don't be impressed with those numbers. I mean, there's a three-day weekend that we need to honor, it's called Labor Day, I don't want people laboring on Labor Day. And so.
That would be a first.
So to be clear, it's not as if we're offering some sort of just egregious gross amount of days with my proposal. And I don't even want the task force spending a lot of time debating, is it six days, is it four days, is it seven? It's like, okay, look, here are the new milestones. You're deputized tomorrow, you have a draft plan next Friday, a weekday Friday, then we start implementing, teachers start coming back on the 20th or the 19th, I mean, that's literally.
Well, I would slow that down. We, I mean, we have, we have not approved any plan, right? So.
Not at all.
Right, so we need to insert that in the process as well.
Yeah, there's a timeline, there's a milestone that says, okay, gets vetted and finally approved, way to go.
Right.
It rolls in implementation. Does any of that, Dave and Theron, does any of that strike you as just gross and you want to vomit?
No, no, actually, you know, the gift of time would go a long way. I mean, the team has been moving mountains, trying to get to this point. And I mean, you know, we started at ground zero, July 1, and started building. So the gift of time would be greatly appreciated by, you know, look, we've heard the teachers say it, I can tell you the administration would appreciate the gift of time too. We're all working really hard trying to hit, you know, hard, an arbitrary line in the sand. So the gift of time is great, asking the new task force to really sink in and go hard, and we'll put a couple hours a day if we can find the time. And, you know, thank you for offering to pay the teacher. And, you know, thank you for offering to pay the teachers that we put on the task forces.
Yes.
That's huge and helpful.
I think full time though, like let's put them on full time.
Yeah. Yeah. You're gonna be a big wave.
Yeah. Sorry, Dave, you're frozen.
That'd be a good problem.
Oh no, he's moving now.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave. All right.
Yeah.
I wanna hear Kay. I wanna hear Kay.
Sorry, Dwayne, trying to unmute. It's really hard. You're right. This is gonna take time, especially if you're willing to, to pay staff to come in. Trust me, they're willing to put in the time. They're willing to put in the time and it is gonna take a long time. These finer details and things, it's amazing. It's amazing what it does.
What, what do you, what's your general view of the, okay, we've got an extra four or five days that we need to extend into June. We did our best to absorb some of these extra days during the course of the year, but we have a few extra days. We're just gonna have to absorb them in June. What, what say you?
Well, the sad part is, is I can only speak for me. I can't speak for my members because I haven't asked them yet. So give me four days and I can get back to you and trust me, I can have that answer. But, um, but here's my deal. Our staff is about education. Our staff is about giving our community and our students and everything. So we are all back and united and together and working hard.
Good. Well, thank you. That's, 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 that's important. I appreciate that. That you're not also trying to speak very well, but I, my, my hunch is that professionalism, that ethic that you just described would easily govern and say that yes, we're in the business of educating. We have a few extra days. We had to absorb in June. It's a much safer day than right now.
Yes. And also just the amount of time, um, I mean, I'm, I'm watching the Zoom meeting and I'm going, yep. This was my world back in March and I know I have some former parents on this call and they can attest. This, this was not a good world for me. It was very hard. It was so challenging in order to make those things rich. As you can see, trying to do the whole presentation, take it up, who's talking, who's not, trying to do the live, it's a lot of work. So it's, it's not even just the regular lessons. I mean, it's also changing the way we think. The last few years, we have worked so hard on teaching kids how to work together. Now we're gonna learn, okay, this is how you work together, three to six feet apart. How do your blocks look? Are they the same, you know? And so it's also just a whole new world. But we need to spend probably a good day or two on mental health. How do we work with kids? How do we talk with kids? How do we make sure our staff, because let's face it, Corona is a roller coaster when it comes to mental health. And this is probably our biggest struggle because when we're talking about stuff, we're going in different parts of our brain. You know, when we get emotional, we jump back and, you know, we talk about with the kids, we jump back like our scared deer, deer, our amygdala is in control. We don't have access to our prefrontal cortex, you know? We need to stay in that prefrontal cortex and, you know, it's just how we gotta do it. Sorry, Dwayne, too long.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you.
So can we map out?
I'm sorry, Lisa, we gotta.
Yeah. Can we map out then what specifically we're asking for the task force to cover and who would be on that task force? Because I, I, I really agree with Dwayne that it can't be 50 people. It needs to be a small group. So I think perhaps if we set the parameters of how many people, like how big this group is, and also very clearly set the scope of it and give direction to Theron, Dave and the, the group to do that. I think it would be productive rather than, and, and clear to the community rather than leave it to, you know?
I think that's Dave's job to make a suggestion of, you know, here's what the task, this reduced task force looks like. Here's who I think should be on it and then move forward.
It, it is, but we've gotten a lot of questions from the community and from teachers about who's on the task force. So I wanna be very clear with the community about who's on the task force. Because it, it, it can't be everybody. If we have every staff member on it, they're not gonna get it done. It's too many people.
Agreed.
So that, that, I'm not trying to get into Dave. Maybe Dave, if you wanna propose something now that we can agree to. So it's very clear to everybody.
Well.
Clear before agreement.
Well, I could weigh in, you know, Kay and I just had time for a very preliminary conversation this morning. Very, very preliminary. And, and then like I mentioned, my day went a little sideways. And I'd like to send Kay and the rest of AEA leadership a proposal. You know, after this board meeting, I can write it up. I'll send it to them. If they give me the thumbs up, uh, you know, the five of us there and, and AEA leadership will kind of put it together. But we are looking for sort of diverse stakeholders with folks from elementary, middle, high school, preschool, right? And we're trying to stay at 12 to 15 people. So be not as, you won't, it can't be as broad, right? As, you know, earlier attempts at trying to be inclusive. We tried to be very inclusive and it didn't work. So we need to be a little smaller, but the people on the task force will be challenged with reporting back to their people as well as we'll be providing regular updates to the entire community, right? And, and, you know, there are a lot of details, right? You have to have the bathroom schedule put together. We do need to hear from the sheriff's department about outdoor education. You know, and we have to make it ours. And, you know, one of the things Dwayne was saying earlier was maybe we need to split, split the amount of kids. So that's something we haven't really looked at. But we can look at that. We did kind of split them. I mean, we took pre-K to four or six. And, you know, based on the guidance from CDE, seemed like a reasonable plan. If we're struggling on that, you know, the big thing is for us to get moving and get moving forward. And, and, you know, I'm convinced that working and, uh, with AEA leadership, we can get, get to a plan, especially if we do decide to start, you know, a week or two weeks later. It would make life, um, a lot more, not quite sure what's happening there.
We got you back. So I'll.
With us.
All right. Good. Yeah. I mean, the, the gift of time goes a long way. You know, that's kind of what we've been hearing, especially since the town hall. And, uh, so, you know, I, I think it makes some sense.
Well, I would only add to the, to the point of if you needed to tip the scale a little further, that if the group needed to be 16, 17, one or 18, my strong bias, and I know you'll, you'll agree with this, the strong bias is to ensure that you get more of the teacher cadre into that team, into that team. I know we're gonna have a slice of administrators. That's great. You have a board member or two, that's great. But and, and some teachers or excuse me, and some parents, that'd be awesome. And a couple of students, maybe some student leaders from various, you know, from, from like maybe the high school. I'll deputize my daughter and, and maybe Jeremy Martin on the other side. Anyway, biases towards the teacher, the other folks are gonna have to actually execute and implement. We need to make sure that they have their voice and that they achieve consensus and that they can then spread it amongst their ranks and get, achieve that bias. That's the only way we get there. You gotta have a bias. You gotta be weighted heavy to the most, you know, the strongest voices in the room on both sides of the argument. They gotta be in that task force.
Absolutely.
I would also argue that, you know, there's some double dippers in there too. You can, you know, we have the DAC, for example, is a group of active involved parents. We have a board member who's a doctor. We have the head of the DAC who's also a doctor. I mean, I, I think with, you know, try, I, I know that every teacher wants to have a voice, but at the end of the day, we can't create a plan with, you know, a couple hundred individuals. And we need the other individuals to speak upon them, speak for them. Every board member's not gonna be there. So the two board members who are there, if we have board members, need to speak for them.
Sure. That's the magic of the task force.
That's not what I'm hearing Dwayne saying though. I'm hearing him say that it needs to be waived with the teachers, the ones that are gonna be in the trenches. How about our pediatrician, Dr. Fahy? How about listening to our pediatrician here in the valley? You know, but.
We have, well.
No, no, our pediatrician, but.
We have multiple pediatricians.
It needs to be waived. What I'm hearing is that we need to hear from the teachers.
Yeah. So Dwayne, why don't you speak to that about how many people you meant when we were talking about that?
So again, right, right. There would be no group that commands a majority of the head count. There would be no group in there that would commands a majority. In other words, we can't have 15 people and eight administrators. Ain't gonna happen. Nor can we have eight teachers. Ain't gonna happen. It's the, it's the whole magic of the compromise. In fact, there's no perfect solution in this thing. So we have to just agree that there's gonna be good minds. They're all good faith. And they're gonna come up with a consensus view that we can all rally around. And they have to have the knowledge that they've been given that task, they have the responsibility and they have the freedom of action to come up with a, a good balanced plan. And with that, with those criteria, we'll support it. And we, we don't need to nitpick the details. We'll support the, the composition of the plan that they've heard back. That in fact will be the juice to get it across the finish line. Anything short of that, they're like, shit, I don't care what I put in front of the board, the board's gonna go with their own plan. You follow?
And I know Susan wants to speak. Susan?
Um, I, I think I've said what I needed to, but I, I do, um, feel confident that, um, we can get a group that represents most everyone. And so, um, that should be the goal with, um, you know, the, the parameters that, that Dwayne articulated. I, I feel like that's a good, good goal.
Great. And I wanted to acknowledge, I don't, I'm not seeing many comments because I have to, I'm trying to work, but, um, but I wanted to call out, call out, um, a couple reminding us all to be respectful and that we all want the best and, um, let's all keep reminding ourselves that we all want the best.
Well said. Well said. And timely. Thank you.
So, so just to be clear, Dave, when you come up with this plan that you're gonna sort of throw by AEA building principles, et cetera, in that plan, I think we need to see a timeline that also includes when we're going to be making a decision as a board on what, you know, every detail might not be mapped out, but at some point we have to say go. And at some point, parents need to know and kids need to know when they're going back to school. So I think it's very important to have an indication of, in, in the proposal of when we expect to have a proposal that we can vote on. Does that make sense?
I'm wondering if we should have, try to have another board meeting sooner than two weeks? Or is that too much to ask?
Well, I, I, I just, if we're, well, if, if we're talking about tomorrow's, you know, Tuesday and we're gonna give them a week and a half or sort of the rough thing, you get, we gotta give them a little bit of time. But I want parents coming off of this call and students coming off of this call to have an understanding of when we're gonna be making a decision. When we're, when we're gonna have enough information or, or we're gonna push the task force who's gonna go back to work full time, right? To make enough, to sit, to make it, to have enough information to make at least may, be able to make a decision. I'm not.
I'm guessing Dave and Theron need to talk rather than give a date right now.
No, that's what I'm asking Dave for, is to have that in the proposal that he's putting together. So we, you know, I, I don't think we can, um, vote on a delay or start time or anything yet until we know kind of what the ask is.
Okay.
I think the teachers should be planning on coming back on the 19th to start planning. I don't think there's any reason to delay the teacher start. The question is the student start.
Right.
And I wanna make sure we have a deadline that we're gonna be telling the community when that's, when we're gonna make the decision.
It's very, very, it's very appropriate. And it could be, you know, in the next couple of days and it could be as far as the next Friday, but we wouldn't wanna go even further than that. You're right, because that's just not fair to the community. And so that's a threshold issue that could probably be answered within the next few days, but not tonight.
Okay. Can we articulate when we're going to answer that and send that out to the community? I.e. let's promise as a board to the community that we will let them know when we're going to make a decision by in the next couple of days.
Dave, what do you think?
Well, you, you gave us, um, a week on Friday. The following Monday is another board meeting. And I would think that the board could approve a calendar change then. Uh, and one of the things the task force would be working on, in addition to everything else it's working on, is what the school calendar looks like for the year. Right? Cause you shave off days in the front, then you gotta do something middle of the stream or towards the end of it. But, you know, I would think that, you know, by the 17th, uh, which is our next board meeting, you know, you should have a lot more details and a lot more, it, it should feel a lot more like a plan.
Let's work then to putting that on the agenda for the 17th and in making a decision on the, the start date of school on the 17th for children.
But just to clarify what you heard, which I think is important is that, whatever date for students, we want the start date for the teachers to maintain the same. And for that to be, whatever that time gets used is for preparing for whatever plan we're gonna implement. So that it'll still be, you know, we don't know what that final plan is at this point because that's what's gonna be worked on. But just, you know, so everybody has clarity around. Still coming back on the 19th. And if that means we have two weeks of training or a week of training or whatever that means, that that's what will be going on. So that at least there's clarity for everyone around that. But we agreed on that?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I think we've pretty much indicated to the community that it's unlikely that the 20, is it the 26th is the one, 26? It's unlikely that we'll be able to get there by the 26th. Would everyone agree with that?
Yes, I do. And I hunch that the board and everyone in this room and probably on that call would, would agree, which gives me the confidence to say the next statement, and that is, I'm comfortable extending off of that date. You're talking about communicating with the community as quickly and as cleanly as we can. I'm comfortable making a decision this evening about pushing the students back. But if we need a little bit more time, that's fine. But you could just see it stacking up and you, you came to the same conclusion just then in your words. It's pretty likely we're not starting on the 26th with children, recognizing where we are with the, with the lack of details in our plan today.
But I, I'm hesitant to, to say, okay, we definitely need two and a half weeks. I, I, I mean, I just don't think that that's, I, I, if we're gonna form a committee to, to work on this, we need to find out what precisely, why do they need two and a half weeks? What are they gonna do? It might be.
To be clear.
Two weeks. It might be three weeks, you know?
To be clear, it's two weeks. 26th of August to the 8th of September or something.
No, it's.
It's a Wednesday, it's a Tuesday. It's 13, yeah, it's literally 14 days.
Okay. Oh, I'm thinking it's two and a half weeks from when the teacher starts.
But there's three days of Labor Day in there. So it's, it's really, we're, we're really having over, you know, the small ball of stuff here at the moment.
So Dave, how quickly, let's say this task force really worked hard. How quickly do you think today you could bring us a final draft?
A final draft? Um, well, if we can get all hands on deck and start working on it tomorrow afternoon, we'll just start, I, I, probably, probably a week. A week on Friday for sure. Yeah, maybe tomorrow's Tuesday. Maybe next Wednesday or Thursday.
We need to take the time that we need to, to, to do this right and not rush it. So, um, I also think there's some considerations about, um, high school, kids and how much curriculum they need to cover. So we need to make sure that we're talking with them about how we can either get that online or they're not missing out on time. So there seem to be some other conversations that we need to have. And I just, I feel like I don't wanna rush, um, you know, coming out with a final plan. I think we definitely want updates and we wanna, you know, know how it's going and how this whole, um, task force is, is working and how we can help move. um help move that along. But I'd rather not give a, a firm deadline that we're trying to rush through and not do a good job.
Well said. Jonathan?
We just have to, I mean, if we're gonna vote on it on the 17th, then, you know, that's kind of the implicit target of having that. Actually, Susan, you make a good point about, um, if there's agreement around the way the high school is gonna start.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, as you guys think about it, it seems like there seems to be definitely some issues to talk about to the teachers about how am I gonna be safe in the building when I'm coming here to do the synchronous model that's proposed? Obviously, those need to be resolved, but it appears that that stuff can probably go forward pretty quickly and, and might even be ready in the original date with the two different-
Right. Well, and, and that's the other point, is one of the things that we were talking about in terms of delayed start is the assumption that we're delaying so we can go back in person. If we can't get there, if this task force can't get to an in-person model for all the students, then I'm not sure why we need to delay the start to work out all these details of the plan to be in person. So that's another reason to maybe not choose the date, because if the answer is not in person, we have a much different task to do.
Fair enough. Fair enough. But we gotta get on the quick here, because I think you're right. There are some folks that are, the high school commentary is a really good example about this thing could go forward at that scale if there's enough mitigating, you know, conditions for our teachers and their children. You know, that's the dynamic that we most often have hurt amongst the high school. And then we have a bunch of family members out there in the communities with high school kids only, and they kind of like to plow it on. They'd like to just plow into it.
Can I ask a question related to this? Like logistically and legally, can we open, like, say that's the case, the high school is ready. Can we open high school before we open elementary school? I mean, for any form of learning? Dave, that's to you.
I, I believe you can. I don't know why you can't. There's been numerous cases where individual schools have been closed down and for whatever reason, and that learning stops or starts late, and they just get exceptions from the state. It would just be a split calendar um for the schools. But um you know, and that would be something that we would tackle with this task force right out of the gate, is if we are starting all remote, you know, what's that gonna look like across the boards? Because it, it was difficult in the spring. So, you know, we are trying to do it better. And the professional development, I mean, the technology team has been working on that. I'm far more optimistic about where things are with that. I mean, and that being said, remote learning is not ideal, but it's better than nothing. So it is a good point that was raised. I mean, but I do think, even, even from a few folks at the secondary level, there was a request, you know, for the gift of time, so that they could be better in the online uh teaching. And then the point about the sudden return to remote is important. And as part of our professional development plan that Theron's been working on, has been this idea of teaching everybody about being better with teaching online. So that's definitely uh a huge growth area for every teacher in the country. You know, it, it's not something we trained for. And um so I, I think a couple of days couldn't hurt for some robust conversations. And, you know, maybe we do a town hall Wednesday night and brief everybody on where we got to and what we're thinking. I, I don't know if that would help.
I would definitely like that.
The other uh aspect of this that we didn't really go through, but that when we were talking about it just kind of offline, there was the, the concept of making sure that the content level discussions happen kind of outside of this core team. So for example, the transportation group, you know, we can't have every, every area professional in, in an effective team. We kind of tried that before and it was difficult. So that team then pulls in experts as needed in, in the content level, the medical experts, transportation, ESL, you know, the, that's social emotional learning, all those contexts that, you know, that is, just to be clear to the community, that is not gonna be ignored as part of this planning. That that would just be sort of a adjunct pull-in type of thing. Do you guys a- agree with that, just to make it clear? Yeah.
So I would like to say that Dave, you have only been working, you've been here a month and a lot of the others-
It's been a full month, actually. Have you had, you haven't had your month anniversary.
A lot of the other schools started working in June or May and, yeah. So April, April. So thank you so much for putting together as much as you have in one month and um and we look forward to putting as much together over the next two weeks. Um, so do we, we have an understanding, we're not voting, but we have an understanding. And any more final cut? Lisa, I wanted to give you a chance, because I know you were trying to talk earlier.
My final statement would be, I have hope.
Great.
I have hope.
Awesome.
That we can all work with Dave and work with everybody to move forward in a safe, in a safe way.
Right.
Nothing more your teachers want and your staff want is to be teaching face to face. And if we have to have, go to another model to where maybe it's two days face to face, two days online, who knows? Let's let this brilliant team come up with something. And we've got some incredible people on this staff that will work with Dave and, and Theron and everybody else. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, so, yeah, any final comments or we can move on to seven, uh, 7.1 action items?
We just want to make one final comment.
Go ahead.
It is possible to be safe if you follow the procedures at work and doing this. I've seen it, I've lived it, I do it on a daily basis. So um, I know there's a lot of anxiety around this stuff and I've also lived it myself and, but I, I know that that's possible. So that, that's just that I would have you guys keep that in mind, that that is a possibility. So just work towards that and work hard at it, protect each other. And as a community that's all work, to make sure that we're all protecting each other and making sure we hold everybody accountable to keep, keep each other safe. And, you know, if we keep that as our high priority, we'll definitely get through this then. And there will be no problem.
Right. Thank you. Um, so next, uh, annual agenda planning exhibit, GP 8E move. Susan, to confirm the 18th, August 17th board meeting. Is that, that's old news, isn't that, Susan?
No, there's a couple of things that we need to talk about for that meeting, I think. Um, Susie, I thought you had something where you couldn't go later or you needed to do it earlier. Was there something?
Why is it, why did we move to morning already? Is that?
It's difficult.
Is that right?
Before school starts, so?
Historically, I think we were doing monitor, we wanted the teachers present in the fall while we did um work sessions and, yeah.
But, but they're not, they haven't even started yet on the 17th.
They haven't started. We could keep them, should we talk about making them evening until we start work sessions with teachers?
Well, I, I, this is my, this-
One thing about the 17th in particular. Okay, um, I thought Eliza had said that there was someone who had a conflict on the 17th because of a, a previous commitment. So we needed to do it earlier possibly. But the other thing on the 17th is that's when the Snowmass Village approval of that tax is, and it's at the same time, it's at four. So I think it would be good if some of us could be at that meeting with Snowmass Village. And so then rearrange our meeting a bit to accommodate.
I just, my, my only comment on do it, moving it to the morning is we have a large parent group that's gonna want, I mean, we saw the number of people we had in this call. I just worry about moving, moving it to a morning meeting, we might, you know, lose a larger portion of the parents who want to be engaged in it.
So let's keep it at 4:00 PM and then to Susan's comment about Snowmass Village, a couple of us, if it's, if it's a physical presence, Susan and I can go make that, but then peel back and join.
Why don't we make it 5:00 PM then?
That's fine, too.
If we can get on that, can we get first on the agenda on Snowmass?
It's not our agenda, but yeah, we, we can see when they have it planned. Yep.
Good.
Does that, I mean, I don't mean to push that if, are you guys-
Actually, I already had it after the clock on my calendar.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So 17th the afternoon?
5:00 PM.
Five, five, okay.
Yeah, so we need to actually vote on that.
Um, right. So Eliza, can, so should we make a motion?
I make a motion to approve GP 8E annual agenda planning exhibit as amended.
Saka. Sorry, I forgot what we were supposed to-
Eliza, can you call the-
Katie Fresh?
Aye.
Susan Merle?
Aye.
Nathaniel Nickel? Dwayne Romero?
Aye.
And Susie Zimmet?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Meeting will be at 5:00 on the 17th.
Okay. Um, any, and Susan, was there anything else that you knew of in 7.1 that we needed to change?
No.
Okay. Okay. So independent language and literacy consultant contract, we allotted five minutes to this if we needed seven. We have the attachments. Do Theron or Dave want to comment on this?
Sure. Um, yeah, I've been working with Lori Anderson since we, since I got here and she is our letters trainer. And letters is really um what we're using to address some shortfalls in our elementary literacy curriculum primarily. Uh, and this coach, um, because of COVID, Lori didn't get to work at the elbow with her. But she has agreed to provide coaching to Lori as she provides uh training to our teachers. So as we're embracing and exploring these academic endeavors, the board will, you know, we will share these items with you along the way. So um, you know, we're asking approval for the coaching for Lori Anderson. I, I think she's being very humble. I, I would bet she could do this just great with, without the coach, but I'm a huge believer in coaching. And I think it's a really great idea. And um, since a lot of the training will be, you know, remote anyway, the costs of training will be less. But, and this was a very good deal. According to Lori, she shared with me several uh reasons. This consultant is kind of taking her under her wing and supporting Lori. So it's a really great opportunity to help a super strong teacher get even stronger.
Just a question, why is this coming to us? Is there a limit threshold or something or just information?
Jonathan, I can't quite hear you.
I said, why is, um, just why is this coming up to us um in terms of for approval? Is there something about it being a contract or is there some dollar limit or, because we approved- the $3,400 expense or doesn't-
Well, it is, it's a private contract and so I'm very comfortable with asking for board approval when we're spending, you know, the money.
Okay. All right. But it's not something required, it's just be saying, here, I want you guys to know. Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Shall we-
I just, one question. Is this related to the SWIFT work or is it completely, just to understand what it-
Oh, this is completely, completely different. This is the letters training, which you've heard referenced along the way a couple of times. But the letters and Lori has put together a team of, oof, over 20 teachers who are gonna get trained in letters. And it's a phonemic awareness-based um sort of supplement and extension of our current literacy program, as I understand. Letters stands alone. It's not connected to what we're using now, but it really helps the kids get their, it, it's basically the science of um, of learning how to read. It's one of the most um well-researched literacy programs in, in the field. So I was delighted to hear we were pursuing letters when, when I got here.
Right, right. So shall someone make a motion to approve independent language and literacy consultant? Oh, probably.
Yeah, let's go through all of them.
Okay, beyond, 7.3, beyond your base agreement, five minutes. Um, move to approve the beyond your base, uh, should we ask Theron or Dave to tell us? Yeah. Do you feel like talking again? Probably not, huh?
Um, yeah, so beyond your base is our consultant helping us on the um bond. And it's around a lot of the policy work that you need to identify. And um, a- as you prepare for a bond, uh, as you take it to the voters in November. This is the, and again, encouraging people to fill out the surveys when they get them in the mail and, and return, return them to the district. Um, but he helped design that. Uh, this company helped design that.
So any questions? So someone want to make them?
No, we're gonna-
Oh, do the, all of them. Okay, calendar update, sorry, 7.1, oh no, yes, calendar. So we have two more.
Two more, yeah.
Okay, so Susan, to propose changes to the school year calendar to end date for 7th to 11th grade on June 29th, June 9th compared to June 10th due to nine-month contract conflict.
Um, my only question here would be, since we're gonna approve calendar changes in two weeks again, do we just lump them all?
Is that okay with you, Susan, to wait till we do the approval?
That's more of a question for Dave and Theron.
Actual issue that we have to address first.
Contract. Yeah.
So when, that would be our recommendation is to maybe table this item until the next board meeting. Because when we start playing with one calendar, it affects all the calendars. And so um based on tonight's earlier conversations, I suggest we table this item.
All right. I have rules of, Robert's Rules of Orders. Do we need to vote to table something or can we just table it? Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Take care. Great.
Awesome.
Awesome. 7.5, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA. Approve the ESEA program funds as presented.
Yeah. Okay, so that's really our title one or title funds. We have, there's five different title portions of it. Um, and we, it's something that we did every year. Um, this year, we're getting about six or $7,000 less than what we had last year. So what we've spent in the past has been an ELL or an English Language Learner teacher. We've spent it on training and PD, beginning me to think about how can we potentially use this fund, because it's affecting all kids. Use it for our letters funding. We've used it for supplies for outreach with minorities. Um, and we've designated support for in-district stuff as well as um looking at ways to do engagement and enrichment activities for college, you know, and post-secondary placement. So it's really looking at a lot of our minorities based on our brand review, lunch, break, and how we support them and ensure that they're being engaged in everything that we do.
Okay, so this is just, is this like a check the box thing that happens every year then, just to be clear?
So that's it for all of our, now, shall we make a move?
Watch this. I'll make a motion to approve items 7.2, 7.3, 7.5, and all items of the 17 action list presented this evening.
Ah, I like that.
I'll second.
Got you.
Okay. Okay, Eliza, can you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Katie Fresh?
Aye.
Susan Merle?
Aye.
Nathaniel Nickel?
Aye.
Dwayne Romero?
Aye.
And Susie Zimmet?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now we're going to nine- Now we're going to 9.1, future meeting work session. We can take a lot of that off, can't we?
It's so done, so sorry to you.
That scared me.
Yeah, let's update this list, Eliza, by the 17th and probably remove all that.
But is there anything that we need to include on the 17th for the agenda? Or is that already, or there, we, we kind of tabled a lot of this policy work until September till we get through that back.
There's no policy work on here.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a agenda planning meeting, hopefully the end of this week. Conversation, so we can get this cleaned up and.
Perfect.
Okay, 10.1, debrief, that is Jonathan Nickel will debrief today's meeting.
Okay, well, first, I just wanna say, yeah, February 13th, we missed everybody, but thank you very much for all your input from everyone. I definitely think we have a clear path forward in terms of what we're on. I feel like everybody is actively engaged in coming up with a solution that works the best for, for all the parties involved, so we really appreciate that. And like I said before, I mean, you think it's overall, there was two discussion. We had a good proposal of ideas to put forward, to move ourselves forward. You guys not hearing this, no?
Talking to the mic, yes.
And so then, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna repeat everything I just said, but I will say, just thank you, everybody, very much for your input. I thought it was a good session where we all listened actively to everybody and are trying to understand everybody's concerns. Like I said, it's, it's not unusual at this point. It's the point we're at, where we're just kind of still in the, in this weird zone of not having, knowing we're gonna start, but not having everything completely exactly. So let's just stick together, work as a team, and we'll get through this and do what's best for everybody involved. And thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Making a motion, or you're talking?
Let me get a second.
I'll second that.
Eliza, can you call the roll?
Katie Fresh?
Aye.
Susan Merle?
Aye.
Jonathan Nickel?
Aye.
Dwayne Romero?
Aye.
And Suzie Zimmet?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. Oh my goodness, I have so many things open right now. What's that? What will be shorter?